Planning Board Meeting Thursday, May 4th, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 6th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6th, 2023, said notice was posted in the Office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Yeah, roll call.
Mr. Cristiano?
Present.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser's gonna be late. Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Seaman? I have not heard from and I don't see him in the audience. Miss Talente?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Councilman Gager is excused because he had to recuse himself. Mr. Kyle is excused. Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Eileen, Rob Seaman has his hand up in the audience.
Thank you. Give me one second. And Chairman Bavai?
Here.
You have a quorum and I have, Rob Seaman is now here, so I'm marked in present.
Alrighty, okay, so if we can rise for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for the troops serving here and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, just as one. Okay, do we have any minutes tonight?
No minutes tonight.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Any correspondence?
I have no correspondence unless you want to bring up Wadsworth Development now or do you want to do that later?
Um, yeah, we can do that after the resolutions.
Okay, so I have no correspondence.
Alrighty, cool. Alright, so first resolution is case number SP 1110 Howell 360 LLC. That's resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters Cristiano, Greenfield, Leggio, Seaman, Talente, Tannenhouse, and myself could have a motion.
Motion.
Make motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. Miss Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Chairman Bavai?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Resolution is memorialized.
Okay, next up is case number SD 3005 Stanley Domon. Resolution granting amended minor subdivision approval, ancillary bulk variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters are Greenfield, Seaman, Talente, Tannenhouse, and Mercer. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I get a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Miss Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next up is case number SP 1098 90 Industrial Court LLC. Resolution granting final site plan approval. Eligible voters Cristiano, Seaman, Tannenhouse, Mercer, and myself. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Mercer.
Oh Mercer, thank you. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
You're muted, Rob.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Bavai?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, so alright, so next up is the SD 2998 Wadsworth Development LLC.
Yes. I believe that's going to be rescheduled till next week.
It's, okay, so it's carried to the 11th or the 18th?
Yes, no, the 11th. There's no hearing tonight on that or no settlement on that.
Right, okay.
So we can go right to our next application.
Alright, so next up then is case number SP 1105 AAVRHW Property LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself. Is there any reason to come back for master plan update or executive session?
No, no, we'll see you next week, my man.
Okay, everyone have a good night.
Thank you, Brian.
Bye.
Just give me a minute to get a few people in here.
Yep.
Mr. Simon, who do you need brought in? I have Jeremy. I have Rich Mazur. I have Pungto. I thought I had Kerry Penkey.
Yep, we need Kerry for sure. So it should be Sean Nager. We have Sean.
Yep.
Christine Caphone.
I don't see Christine on here.
Christine, oh, she may be a couple of minutes late. Christine is our Caphone. Yeah. Michael Morris, is he on?
Yes.
Let's see, Jeremy Lang, Ron Gazarovski.
I brought Ron in.
Okay.
I also brought in Ms. Ferguson and Mr. Lieberman.
Yep, I see them. Good. I think other than Ms. Caphone, and I see our court reporters here, which is good. So I think, yeah, other than, and so I think we can, I know my recollection is that Ms. Caphone's daughter may have had a prom tonight, so she may be a little late for good reason, pictures, etc. So, but I think we can get started certainly without her and then she can, but if you see her, you know, log on, Eileen, please bring her in.
I will bring her in.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, are we ready to go or should I?
Yep.
Good, so, right, so thank you, members of the board. Good evening, Rob Simon from Harold Law here on behalf of the applicants. Just to remind everyone, because it's been a few weeks. This application is seeking preliminary final major site plan approval to construct a warehouse office building approximately 200,000 square feet. Loading docks, trailer parking spaces and passenger vehicle parking spaces. The property is 19.91 acres in size, located in the SED Special Economic Development Zone along Victory Road. As you may recall, at the last hearing when we were together, I reminded you all that there was recently a prior application for a ground mount solar panel installation on this property inherently beneficial use. That was statutorily denied by the Board of Adjustment. So here we are, access to the site, as you recall, will be provided via two new driveways along Victory Road with a approximately 30-foot circulation aisle provided around the eastern, southern, and western sides of the building. We testified and stated that the proposed development fully complies with the use and bulk standards applicable to the SED zone. We talked about the one design waiver exception that may be required under Section 188-195A of the ordinance regarding replacement trees and requiring a waiver to make a contribution, a financial contribution, to be deposited in the Township Tree Fund due to the limited available planting area. And of course, as always, we request any and all relief that may be required by this board or otherwise deemed necessary. So where we left off last time is that we presented a bunch of witnesses. Jeremy Lang, the Director of Development for Active Acquisitions, Tongue To Lamb of Bowler Engineering, the engineer for the project. Sean Nager from MNH Architects, the architect on the project. Kerry Penkey from Lang and Engineering, our traffic and circulation consultants. Michael Morris, who discussed the environmental condition of the property. And Christine Caphone, our professional planner on the project. There were certainly questions from the board members and the board professionals. And we had not yet gotten to questions from members of the public, including Council Stuart Lieberman. But before we do that, what I would respectfully ask is that we re-present Ms. Penkey, Kerry Penkey, who is going to be providing some additional traffic and circulation testimony in support of the application and particularly in response to some of the questions that were raised by the board members and board professionals. So the way we, yes.
Take a breath, please. Mr. Chair, if I might address some housekeeping. This is Anne Marie Rizzuto from Ron Cuciaro's office. Yep, so, so Mr. Simon, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think you were about finished. So if we could please ask Mr. Lieberman and his associates to put their appearances on the record along with the names of their clients. That's the first thing.
Okay, sorry, it always takes me longer to unmute than I anticipate. I submitted a list of my clients. I'll repeat them into the record, but that's already been provided to you during the last meeting. So my clients are Mirana Scarselli, Chris Bates, Justin Goomeley, Diane Lindstrom, Francis Santori, Betty Velez, Edwin Woolley, Marie Woolley, Mary Ann, and Robert Wagner. And the addresses were provided by email dated April 14, 2023.
Okay, so the, have the name, has the list of names been submitted to Mr. Simon and Mr. Gazarovski?
Yes, my, this is Zoe Ferguson. I also represent the objectors. When I sent that email, I believe it was sent to Mr. Simon, Mr. Gazarovski, Mr. Cucharo, and I think there was one other person, sorry.
All right, so Zoe, I know you have my email address. If you could please send that to me so we have it in our file. One last, so Mr. Gazarovski, could you please put your appearance on the record, sir? We can't hear you.
You're muted, Ron, or something.
Alright, he's muted.
Rob, we can't hear you.
Rob Simon, who does he represent?
Rob Simon represents the applicant.
No, not you. Who does Ron Gazarovski represent? What's the name of the owner?
Oh.
The Volle Realty, I believe.
But I don't know which the Volle entity, but I can get that for you.
He represents a property owner.
Yeah, the property owner, okay, so that's, I think that's it. I think the order will be you're going to continue your direct case. You're asking for the traffic engineer to be resubmitted for a direct testimony?
Yes, Anne Marie, what I would suggest is as follows. We're going to continue with direct testimony from Kerry Penkey or traffic and circulation engineer. And then after that, we would open up for questions of each one of these witnesses. From, you know, first Mr. Lieberman, Ms. Ferguson, members of the public. The only thing I would ask Ms. Rizzuto is that because of some scheduling and related actual health issues that maybe if we can have maybe Ms. Penkey be cross-examined first and then followed by Mr. Nager and then we can just, you know, go from there.
You're representing Mr. Nager for direct testimony?
No, no, for cross, I'm saying for purposes of cross-examination.
So, Mr. Chair, please interrupt me if I have any.
Yes, so I have one question, so, Mr. Lieberman. Do you have witnesses also? Do you have any professionals that are testifying? Okay, so the way I would want to do it is we'll allow them to finish their testimony. Whatever questions the boards have, the board has. Then I would have Mr. Lieberman cross-examine and then present his witnesses to give, you know, Mr. Simon and whomever an opportunity to do, and then we'll go to the public.
So, Mr. Simon, you understand that the members of the public are going to have an opportunity to question all of your witnesses as well as Mr. Lieberman's witnesses after everyone else is done. We're not.
Yeah, yeah, right, and so Ms. Rizzuto and the chairman, if I can respectfully just request that, you know, given as I said, we have some some scheduling issues with some, with our witnesses and they have provided direct already and, you know, of course, they're going to all be subject to cross-examination. I would ask that certainly at least for the first two witnesses, if not all the witnesses, we would ask that not only Mr. Lieberman or Ms. Ferguson cross, but also have all the members of the public, to the extent they're interested in asking questions of those witnesses. Ask the question so that we don't have to bring back certainly the first two witnesses, Ms. Penkey and Mr. Nager again on a future date if possible.
I understand your request, but it's my understanding that as was announced at the last meeting, we're going to need your witnesses to come through till the end. The members of the public are going to be given an opportunity to question your witnesses and Mr. Lieberman's witnesses, separate from the board members. And then they're going to be given an opportunity to make statements or give testimony on your own. So while I appreciate your issue of your witnesses aren't available or you don't want to, I'll defer to the chair about that.
Well, if I may jump in, Mr. Chair and anybody else. Mr. Simon, the members of the board here are volunteers. We are not paid to be here. If you cannot make your people available that are being paid, you got to figure that out. That is not an issue we have to address. We make ourselves available way more often than we should, to be perfectly honest.
Mr. Seaman, I completely agree and of course, and I serve as a board attorney in a number of communities myself. The only, one of my witnesses has a health issue. Not affecting for tonight, but I just would like, you know, we can maybe address it separately, that's all.
Honestly, I'm just going to jump in.
Yeah.
She's not going to be released tonight, so.
No, of course not.
Like, not going to be, honestly, she's not going to be done with cross-examination and cross-examination from the public, given the way that the board has laid this out. You're gonna, your witnesses are going to be cross-examined by Mr. Lieberman. And then his witnesses are going to present their testimony and the public is going to be on the end, so she's going to have to come back. I understand.
I just wanted to present it to the board, that's all.
And again, and respectfully, I understand. The reason I'm doing it the way I'm doing it is I want to make sure that, again, just following an orderly manner. It's the least confusing. And, you know, the board members will get all the information they need to get, you know, and also the public so they can hear all the testimony because I don't want to jump from this then to this, then to this, then to this. Because then there's, you know, it just, it's just better if it's in an orderly fashion. And like I said, I respect where you're coming from, I do, but this is just the way I prefer to run the meeting, so.
That's, it's completely fine. I just wanted to make that known to the board.
Where you're coming from, I do. So, I mean, with that, if that's, if everything like that, if that's out of the way.
Yeah.
You can, you know, start and, you know, start with your presentation.
Okay, very good.
One more thing, Eileen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Anne Marie.
Mr. Gazarovski says it's not a problem on his end. Do we have him muted?
His hand is back raised, so I'm not sure what that's about.
I don't show him with his hand raised.
Oh yeah, I see it. Ron Gazarovski, hand raised.
Yeah, it's on his picture.
He can't be heard.
Excuse me, might he be able to call in and be heard that way?
Yeah, I mean, or sometimes.
I don't care where he is on the screen anymore, honestly.
Maybe he logs out.
Apparently he's having somebody help him with his technological issues. But Ron, like, we're not going to hold up the meeting while you resolve this issue.
Yeah.
Ron, you might, you might try.
Come back on.
Yeah, log up, Ron, and log back in and I'll bring you back in. See if that fixes it.
Okay, so while he works on that.
Yep.
Mr. Seaman, Mr. Simon, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So we'd like to call Kerry Penkey, please.
Hi, good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Wonderful, so.
You were sworn previously?
I was, yes.
So Ms. Penkey, you understand that you're still under oath, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you were present and provided testimony at the last hearing of the board on this application, correct?
Correct.
And there were some issues that were raised by board members, board professionals with regard to certain aspects of your testimony that you would like to address via continuation of your direct examination.
Yes, I would.
Okay, so why don't you proceed?
Wonderful, thank you. Can we bring up exhibit A40 to start? So there's two items specifically from the last hearing that, you know, we wanted to readdress at the start through some more direct testimony. The first is the questions that came up with the existing S-curve along Victory Road. So after the last hearing, we actually went out and we met with some township professionals to look at the curve and the conditions along the road. And we came up with some engineering design solutions to really improve the conditions along the road following MUTCD, the manual on uniform traffic control devices, following that manual for design standards. So we've prepared this exhibit to share with you tonight. The first part of the exhibit I'd like to point out is the shaded area that you can see. So that we've established as the widening area for the pavement. You know, we ran truck templates along this curve at the speed limit that I'll talk about with you that we're proposing. We feel the widening here will better accommodate not just trucks, but all vehicles along the curve to improve those conditions. Additionally, what you'll also see on here is that we're calling out to replace signage. You'll see that at the beginning of the curve in both the eastbound and westbound direction. So the first sign is we're going to replace those existing signs. They kind of look like they're sharp curved straight. We want to replace those with MUTCD S-curve signs, the W15R sign. And what's different today, as we've done some further study that you'll see on this concept, is we're actually going to propose a uniform speed for our vehicles of 25 miles per hour for this curve. So that you'll see under the truck sign, that W113 at 25, we're actually going to replace that 35 with that 25. We'll feel that better fits the conditions along this curve. Additionally, we also want to address trucks in the areas. We know, you know, that was a concern by the board. And add some additional signage, specifically that W113, that truck rollover sign, as it's called, with an additional speed advisory sign to really get the message across about that proposed speed for the curve. What you'll also see there are those W18L and W18R signs. So those are Chevron signs, which would be located on the outside of the curves in both directions. So those Chevron signs will just allow better warnings for the curve driving along it. We're also proposing to install raised pavement markers. You'll see on the concept, those are called out as a W with a circle and a BA with the circle. So the BA ones are going to be amber and they would be along the center line. And the W circles are going to be white RPMs that would be along the shoulders. Also, as part of what we're proposing to improve these conditions is restriping along on the S-curve as well as some middle and overlay to improve the conditions where we've designated on the exhibit. So that's that hatch mark area, that single line hatch mark. So we feel, you know, in our opinion, that these additions are really going to improve the conditions along the curve and really give drivers a good warning about what's coming up approaching the curve as well as driving through it.
Very good, so with these improvements that are being proposed, do you believe that as a result of them, that there will be a safe condition along that? um, do you believe that as a result of them, that there will be a, a safe condition along that portion of Victory Road?
Yes.
And that, to be clear, um, with those in, uh, proposed improvements, that trucks can safely pass each other? In that area? And cars can also safely pass each other?
At, at the proposed advisory speed of twenty-five miles per hour, yes.
Thank you. And um, and, and the, with regard to um any of your uh testimony from the last hearing, other, other than um what you just testified to, um, is there anything else that you uh want to add with regard to what was previously testified to?
Not at this time. I feel a lot of that covers um what was previously brought up.
Um, I have no further questions for, for this witness on direct.
Uh, so I do want to bring up the second um.
Okay, with regard to, right, okay.
Offsite intersection. So the second question that had come up um that we had said we would look at is going to be exhibit forty-three. Um, so that's going to be the Victory Road and that Lakewood Farmingdale Road uh intersection, that eastbound right turn. Uh, questions had come up about that. So we actually ran turning templates for um multiple vehicles um to show you tonight on this exhibit. Uh, we looked at vans, um, single unit trucks, the SU thirties. Um, we also looked at school buses, which currently making the turn. Um, we also then looked at SU forties, the single unit forties, as well as the Title Thirty-nine template for the WB sixty-seven. Um, so as you can see, that Title Thirty-nine template does encroach over the same line, center lines, which would be similar to any truck making that right turn movement today. Um, given the intersection is under stop control, a truck would easily be able to wait uh to make the right turn at a time when, when there's no oncoming traffic in either direction. Um, the NJ DOT, um, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, in their roadway design manual, actually would allow for centerline encroachments um at intersections where there are infrequent turns by large vehicles, um, which is definitely the case at this intersection where we would expect little, if any, trucks um from our proposed warehouse to make that turn. Um, if there's any trucks really expected, it's going to be closer in line with the single unit trucks, those SU thirties and forties, which make the movement.
You're, you're talking about that right-hand turn?
Correct, that right turn from Victory Road to southbound Lakewood. So we'd see more.
Ask you, again, still don't have a tenant, right? So like, you cannot state with any certainty what kind of truck is going to move and the frequency with which that movement is going to happen. So that, that tractor trailer movement, which goes into the opposing lane of traffic, is not ideal at all.
But it is, if we look at DOT design standards, um, the majority of movements at this vehicle are, this movement are done by passenger cars. So that encroachment over the center line is allowed because it won't significantly impact other vehicles.
Ms. Beam, can you let Ms. Penkey please finish her answer?
I mean, yeah, I, I just, I, I feel like she's not listening to the question and she.
I certainly am listening. I'm, I'm trying to answer.
Just, let's just, let's, let's just reel it, reel it back. So Ms. Penkey, can you answer Ms. Beam's first, first question, please?
So we've looked at this intersection as it is for different design standards specifically.
My question, but okay, keep going.
Okay, so wait, wait, wait. So why don't we do this?
My question was, do you have tenants? Yes or no?
No, we don't have a specific tenant at this time.
So you have no idea what kind of vehicles are going to be traversing in and out of the site, correct?
Correct.
You make a statement that says this movement is highly unlikely. You cannot state that with a certainty because you have no idea who's going to use this building, correct?
I can state with a certainty of what I know in my professional opinion is likely to occur during.
Again, that's not answering my question.
Well, no, wait, wait, wait.
Asking for my professional opinion and, and I'm trying to provide it. Because of the population locations down there, the Lakewood, it is unlikely a truck from this warehouse is going to be going to that location. Um, what I was trying to get to is that any vehicles we would expect delivery wise to go there would be closer to the single unit vehicle size, which would be more trucks that would do more local deliveries, which is what to the south is, would be more local area deliveries.
You don't have a tenant, so you can't say that with certainty. So I can tell you that I've seen Dominos in a twenty-five hundred square foot space show up with a tractor trailer. So without a tenant, you cannot state with any certainty the type of truck that is going to be in or out of the space. And you also cannot state with any certainty that that, that movement will not likely happen, which is what I stated at the last meeting. And the situation has not changed. So I, it is what it is. The board is going to assess your testimony with my questioning and that's fine. Uh, but I'm here to tell you, without a tenant, without understanding who's going in and out of the space, to say that that movement with the tractor trailers is not going to be made, you cannot make with any certainty, correct?
I cannot make any, I can only give my professional opinion.
I understand that.
The only other thing I can state is.
It's a yes or no question.
It's.
With any certainty, you cannot say a hundred percent that that movement is not going to be made by a tractor trailer, yes or no?
That's correct. I'm giving you, not correct. I'm giving you my professional opinion. And the infrequency of trucks that are going to do there, it's in line with NJ DOT standard that allows encroachment, which one thing I do want to point out is school buses that do make that right turn today, I've seen it, I've observed it, also encroach on that center line, similar to the single unit trucks and the WC sixty-seven trucks. So I think that's important to say too, is it's a condition that happens out there with school buses too. But it's a minor encroachment and it doesn't significantly impact the traffic along the road. So per NJ DOT standards, it's acceptable for this type of intersection, given the predominance of passenger cars at this location.
And Ms. Penkey, with regard to.
Without issue, buses are making that movement today with encroachment.
Ms. Penkey. Yes. With regard to the location of Route one ninety-five in relation to this particular intersection and how to get to Route one ninety-five and the, your experience in terms of tractor trailers seeking to access state highways, do you have an opinion based on your experience as to the frequency of tractor trailers making a left-hand turn here to go to Route nine, one ninety-five as opposed to going to downtown Lakewood?
Yes, and as I had, you know, testified previously, um, that's the regional roadway network and that's where trucks are going to be oriented to and from for this site. That's, you know, my professional opinion. Um, you know, it's I would expect at any site is they're heading towards the regional roadway network, which is going to be a left turn off Victory Road and a right turn onto Victory Road to and from that interchange.
And, and you've worked on other warehouse projects with um this type of situation where um the truck would approach in, in intersection and one way would go to the downtown and one way would go to a state highway, correct?
Correct.
Right? And, and in those instances, based on your professional experience and observing uh those types of movements, do you have an, a professional opinion as to the likelihood of a tractor trailer making that right-hand turn going to, to a downtown as opposed to going towards the state highway?
It, it would be infrequent.
So I would ask, and how many of those experiences have to do with an environment close to Lakewood, which is a booming economy and has a very different distribution of traffic, uses, et cetera? So how many of these, how much of this experience do you have in this exact environment?
I mean, this exact town, um, and this location, this is the project. I, there's been other projects I've worked on areas in Jersey that have had similar situations. I had one in West Deptford.
Wait, wait, wait. Ms. Ms. Beam, with all due respect.
No, respectfully, I asked a question and I want the question act that I asked actually answered instead of dancing around the question. I asked a question, how much of your experience has been in areas proximate to Lakewood?
I, I can't specifically, I've worked on hundreds of projects. I can't specifically pull out of my head projects I've worked on around Lakewood, I'm sorry.
So if you've worked.
I've worked on some projects in similar areas where trucks have been oriented to and from the regional roadway network.
I understand that and I understand your answer. My answer, my question was, given the unique dynamic of where this is proximate to Lakewood, how much of your experience is in this particular area? And your answer was your, your nearest area is West Deptford?
I was given the example of a project that had a similar situation where there was a downtown area to one way and a interchange hundreds of feet to the other way and all the trucks are oriented to and from the interchange. Um, that's how I was trying to answer your question.
Understand.
Trucks of this size would not be frequent, frequent to and from a downtown area like Lakewood, which is why.
You have experienced downtown Lakewood?
Wait, wait, wait.
Downtown areas I have experience with throughout the state of New Jersey.
About downtown Lakewood.
Can, can I, can I interrupt for just one second? We have a court reporter here that is trying very hard to take down all the questions and all the answers. It is impossible for her to do so if two people are talking over each other. So I would respectfully ask that once a question is asked, that a question is answered before there's a follow-up question, so you're not talking over each other.
I agree, but I would respectfully ask that the question I ask is answered instead of dancing around it and not answering my question.
I, I respectfully disagree. I'm not trying to dance around anything. I'm, I'm trying to give you my professional opinion. We've worked near areas of downtown nature, similar to Lakewood.
I, I have to, I have to disagree. I, I like, honestly, I, like Lakewood is, it, it, and I'm not trying to disparage it or what have you, but the area around Lakewood is unique in its experience, its, its traffic distribution, its, its economy, et cetera, than other downtown areas throughout the state. So the question becomes, thank you, uh, a, and I respectfully asked it multiple times and I guess the answer is there hasn't been. But at the end of the day, to say, because you've worked in other downtown areas, that trucks are not going to go into Lakewood without having the experience of understanding that Lakewood economy is something that the board is going to have to consider and we're going to move on from there. We're not, we're going to agree to disagree on this issue. But I just want to put it out there for the record, at the end of the day, I think those trucks are going to turn and some of the trucks are going to turn and go into Lakewood. And that's going to become problematic. So that's my professional opinion. So we're going to agree to disagree and we're going to.
Can I make one final statement? Um, just, just to kind of correct the record, I, I didn't say no trucks. I said it would be infrequent that this size truck would go into downtown Lakewood. And I had also said that we could expect that single unit trucks like the SU thirties and SU forties we ran templates for um could be a possibility to go in there, which is why we showed that template versus an existing vehicle like the bus that's already making that movement as the comparison.
I understand.
Respect to the questions about centerline encroachments um and all that and.
I, I, I understand your testimony, thank you.
Ms. Mrs. Beam, can I add a few things, please? Because I brought this up at the last meeting. I did my due diligence, Mrs. Pinky, the last couple of weeks and I went to the site where you guys are proposing the warehouse, the S curve and back at five forty-seven. Okay, I parked my truck at the intersection at Atlantic Auto Body. Okay, that's right at the corner of this uh intersection. It's a wor, a working auto body shop. In your, your plans here with these terms, you know, they're just drawings, they're not live, like, you know, stuff that happens every day, okay? I ran a business in this town for twenty-six years and I used to come down Victory Road on a regular basis with a, an F four fifty dump truck and a twenty-two foot trailer. And I could tell you with certainty, in my professional opinion, you need to get into the left-hand lane of Victory Road approaching, if you're going to make the right onto five forty-seven, and you one hundred percent absolutely cross the double line to get onto the road. There's two telephone poles at, at the intersection. And there's a low grade on the right-hand side and there's a low grade on the left-hand side. You said you guys were going to address the left-hand side, which I could see on here, it's shaded, you know, for trucks coming in from one ninety-five. Okay, I sat there and I, and I watched Amazon trucks, UPS trucks, buses, small, single axle trucks, not even tractor trailers, make the right-hand turn. Okay, not one of them didn't cross the double line a little bit, whether there's no traffic or some traffic, okay? That's why.
I, I.
I, I, I just want to know, is there, is there a question for Ms. Penkey? Because she'd be happy to answer it, I'm sure.
Well, her question, the question is the same as Mrs. Beam asked. There's no certainty of what trucks are going to be coming down this road, number one. Okay, we don't even know who the tenants are. So that's all out the window for, for as far as that. Number two, okay, the, the intersection is not going to handle the way it is right now, this kind of movement from whatever tenant you get, whether it's going to be the, the smaller tractor trailers or the bigger tractor trailers. Okay, the movement on the road right now.
Uh, uh, again, I, with all due respect, th- this is for questions of, of the witness. If there's a question for the witness, the witness would be happy to answer the question.
The witness, listen, the witness is either talking in circles with us or it's word salad, is, is, as far as I, I hear it every time.
Well, I, I, I.
We can't guarantee what trucks are going to turn and not turn. And her, her opinion or professional opinion about trucks not making that right-hand turn is absolutely ridiculous. You don't know where, where these trucks are, the movement's going to be. And you know what? The whole concept of every time we have a warehouse uh application, that the trucks are only going to go to one.
Hang on, hang on.
Yes, Mr. Boat B.
Okay, guys, listen, let her finish her testimony.
All right.
And then we will ask her questions. You know, we'll have, you know, we'll have our, our opportunity. We got to just kind of not veer off here. I got, I know where you're coming from. No, I know where you're coming from.
I sat there, I sat there, Mr. Mr. Boat.
Listen, you know what, there's not one person, I'm going to tell you, there's not one of us on the board that after this hearing didn't go take a ride on that road and look at things. So you're, I'm sure your concerns are similar to, to all of us. So let's just let the witness finish her testimony. And then we'll, we'll begin questioning everybody before this gets way off.
No problem.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and certainly it's to the extent that, you know, any of the board members or professionals have questions of, of any of our witnesses, we're happy to answer them. Uh, but they, they should be questions and certainly, uh, we'll take, you know, the questions into consideration, providing the answers. So is it, I'd be happy, is there any other, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Uh, okay, I, is she finished with her testimony?
Well, I, Ms. Penkey, are you, first of all, I don't think there's an outstanding question right now. Correct, for purposes of the record.
Okay.
Right? Um, so then, so, so, so Ms. Penkey, um, the uh, the county, the Victory Road is a, is a local municipal roadway, correct?
Correct.
Right? And, and Lakewood Farmingdale Road is a county roadway, correct?
Correct.
And um, is it your understanding that um this application made an applica, uh, this applicant, excuse me, made an application to um Monmouth County Planning Board for, uh, for approval and connection with this application because um of uh Lakewood Farmingdale Road?
Yes.
Okay, and did the applicant receive um any action as to that county application?
Ms. Meyer saying that they've received approval through the county application.
In fact, they received final approval from, from the county um on or about uh March thirty-first of, I'm sorry, on April twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two. Does that refresh your recollection?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Um, I have no further questions at this time uh for Ms. Penkey.
Okay, so if we can take down the uh, the display. Mr. Chen, you have something to say?
Uh, yes, I have a few questions for um Ms. Penkey with regard to her, um, with regard to the truck turning concept plan. Um, when you came up with the uh truck turning concept plan, were you aware of the telephone poles on the corners of Victory Road uh when you created this plan?
Yes, sir, the utility poles are on our plans.
Okay, um, and my other question is, when you, um, when, when you reviewed. when you, um, when, when you reviewed the Victory Road S curve, did you actually uh, drive down Victory Road at the um, at the advisory speed you were trying to uh, aim for before coming to your uh, decision on the uh, advi- advisory speed uh, for this, for this uh, term?
Yes.
All right, and then, um, because I saw this, I saw this early this weekend, I didn't have a chance to the uh, issue with them, but I guess my question is for the sign legend on your proposed Victory Road concept plan. If one looks at the sign legend box, it looks like the sign side, the signs of uh, the truck rollover sign, the W thirteen dash one and the um, S curve ahead sign, it looks like they appear to be different. Uh, do you know, do you happen to know if those are going to be the same size uh, along Victory Road or not?
I'd have to look up the dimensions, but um, I believe the warning signs um, are the same, but we can work with you. Um, they'll be done per MUTCD standard, of course.
Uh, I don't have any further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any of the board members? I mean, I mean, any questions for any of the witnesses? You've, you've completed testimony, right, Mr. Simon?
Um, yeah, Ms. Ms. Pinky uh, has completed her testimony. And at this time, we don't have any further witnesses, of course, subject to the right to bring in any or all of our witnesses for any, either redirect rebuttal uh, as we see fit.
Okay, of course. Okay, so do any of the board members have any questions of any of the professionals from the application?
I do. I have a quick question for um, Ms. Pinky. On the.
Megan, just one second. Yeah, let's, let me get back. No, that's okay. I just wanted to get back on the screen. Thank you.
On the rendering that you put up is, and forgive me, I am not an expert at this. But you put up, is, is there a change in that S turn or was it not the whole S turn that you put up in the rendering?
So there's a, there's a match line in it. So there's the, the bottom part and the top part. So we are showing that whole um, uh, S curve starting from its like western extent to its eastern extent.
Oh, I got you.
We just wanted to put on one concept, so we thought the match line would um, be better instead of two pages.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Shoot. Ms. Pinky, uh, what conditions do you uh, perform your test? Is it optimal like weather conditions? Is it rain, sleet, hail, snow? How does, how does that work?
Um, when we go out to the site, um, and you know, we look at the day, um, I'm not sure what you mean by conditions, like do we pick a rainy day to go out? Per um, MUTCD standards, um, so that takes into account a lot of, um, you know, engineering design and criteria.
But I'm pretty sure those S turns during a snowy day is different from a nice bright sunny day.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
So that's what I'm just, what type of conditions?
So we're not designing it based on a specific dis- um, condition. We have to design it to our design standards um, that we use. Uh, the manual and uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD.
What's the design standard? What is?
Oh, it's, it's different for each sign, um, and each thing that we've implemented in the curve, the Chevron sign has different criteria. Um, the, the signage itself is different criteria.
Is there ever a time where you perform on substandard conditions on curves or S curves or something dangerous where we can use bad weather design?
Uh, no.
Ms. Pinky, I think the, the question made, just to, to help out a little bit, I think the question is whether, when, when you uh, undertake a design and you're doing it under a specific standard. Um, does that standard take into consideration all different types of, of weather conditions?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. It's specific um, design standards um, that we have to follow. Um, it doesn't really mention design conditions or, or.
Right, so, so, so in other words, irrespective of the, the weather condition, you as a professional licensed traffic engineer are, are designing to a certain standard and the standard um, takes into consideration all different types of weather conditions.
Yes.
But we're both clear that on a snowy day, it's different than on an optimal sunny day.
Oh, yes, for sure. I agree with you.
So, Ms. Pinky, this question was asked at the last meeting, so I'm going to ask it again. With the changes that you made to the, the S turn, those improvements, can two tractor trailers both traverse that S turn in opposite directions, one going one way and one going the other safely?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Pinky, I'll, one more question for you. Okay, I had asked you last time, you know, I know we go, you, you're, the, the way you guys do things are, you know, DOT and and whatever the, the standards are for transportation and the charts and all that stuff. But I had mentioned, you know, if you guys want to really do due diligence to this board and to the residents of Hallow Township, why don't you bring some tractor trailers there, live tractor trailers? And let's see them navigate this S turn at this twenty-five miles an hour that you're proposing, because you, you are going to get onto the road at fifty from five forty-seven. Then they're going to, then they're going to gear down and hit it at twenty-five. And that's the other direction too. And that doesn't include any other vehicles that are on the road. If they're going to even follow you know, the speed limits, because that's, that's something we can control or you can control. So as far as the S turn and the five forty-seven, you know, intersection, you know, bring some trucks, live trucks and let's, let's do it live instead of going by what you know, these, these uh, charts say and all this stuff. That's, you know, we live here, we, we see how it's done every day. You know, you don't live, you unfortunately don't live here and professionals don't live here. You know, that's, that's my, my question to you. You know, I respect your, your, your professionalism and, and everything, but it's not accurate. It's not what we see every day. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I might, Anne Marie.
Go ahead, Anne Marie. You're muted, Anne Marie.
Okay, now am I hearing? Mr. Legio, thank you very much. Mr. Simon, it's, it's certainly your option or consideration to do live tests like Mr. Legio is uh, is suggesting, but I don't know that this witness should be put on the spot to answer that kind of question. It's really an applicant question. And for the board members, if you feel that some kind of testing like that is really important and it's been discussed in the hearing and the applicant chooses not to do it, then you can take from that choice whatever a logical, relevant point you want to take from it. But I think that we've been uh, talking about this for quite a while. And we have heard this witness say she thinks there's going to be infrequent use at that intersection by trucks and she can't really tell because we don't know the tenant. So, Mr. Simon, do you have anything to say about whether your applicant wants to run live tests with uh, tractor trailers over this point?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll answer it two, two ways. Number one is, as we discussed at length by a number of professionals, including myself at the last hearing, the board is prohibited from, in essence, denying an application because of off-site traffic conditions, because they're well beyond the jurisdiction of this board for site plan approval. And there's a binding case law to support that proposition. Number two, with regard to uh, the request, just like any request of any board member, any board professional, et cetera, that the applicant certainly will, will take all into consideration. Um, but I think uh, you are correct in that it's not an appropriate question for the particular uh, professional witness. Um, because, you know, they're, they're just providing their testimony and the question should be just about their testimony. So um, I, I take copious notes at all the, at all these hearings.
Right, and we discussed a, a, a live tractor trailer um, uh, test at the last hearing and Ms. Pinky, Ms. Pinky came back with a uh, a plan that shows four or five different changes, shaded areas where they are proposing the widening at the S turn, the signs are going to be changed, proposing a twenty-five mile per hour uh, limit rather than whatever it is right now, raised pavement markers, restriping, milling and overlay where necessary. And her testimony at that point was we'll make that section of Victory Road uh, of it safely able to be passed by two different trucks. So that's her testimony, and if you have a question about that, that's fine and, and it can be commented upon when we go to make a vote and, and whether or not you feel there's the weight of her testimony there. But I, I think we should move out on from that. She, they've given a proposal. And Mr. Simon, I would just also like to say to you that while I understand about off-site improvement, that section of the roadway is, is off-site by how far? Your, some of your trucks are going to go that way and some of your trucks are going to go the other way. And yes, this is off-site, but this is the condition that because you're bringing tractor trailer uh, uh, traffic, you may, you, you are taking an extra step to say, here's some improvements that we can make. So the off-site, the off-site uh, uh, improvement, we understand that. But this is not a major uh, redo of the entire road to make it straight instead of uh, S turn. And the same thing with the corner intersection. There, I don't hear any, any proposal to do anything about the corner intersection. And I don't hear that there really is nothing that can be done. I don't know if Ms. uh, Pinky finished her testimony because she got interrupted, but that point wasn't addressed. One, one thing, Mr. Simon, one, one thing more. Chair, we do need to pay attention to when the witness testifies and then the board members question and not be repetitive about the question. We need to follow the format that we set and I urge everyone to please consider that because her testimony wasn't done and she got waylaid with several different questions. Not that the question shouldn't be answered. They, they should be answered. They should be asked. So that's all I have to say. I, it, it's taken up too much time to get through one witness.
Well, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying. But, you know, we're the ones that have to sit here and we have to take in all the testimony and we have to weigh everything. So if we take six more days to listen to everything, that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, I.
So I respect your opinion, but this board is going to ask as many questions as many times until we get the answers that we're all comfortable with before we're going to vote on anything.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that.
All right, so with that being said, anybody else from the board have any questions of any of the witnesses? Before, um, we let Mr. Lieberman cross-examine.
I do, I just have one more, um. How much wider are we making that turn?
I'm sorry, Ms. McGrath, is this for, for Ms. Pinky, right?
Oh, I apologize, yes.
No, that's okay.
Hey, um, I believe it was two or three feet, but it varies along the curve, um, uh, if we wanted to pull that exhibit back up, um, you can see that the, the widening that we're doing varies depending on the point of curve we're on.
You want to.
I think the maximum widening might have been about three feet at its widest point.
Ms. Pinky, can you refer to answer Ms. McGrath's question? Can you please refer to the, which exhibit are you referring to?
So I believe this is um, A forty. Um, so the widening we're proposing, um, as you can see, the widths vary uh, depending what point of the curve you're along. Um, and I believe the maximum widening you're doing um, was between two and three feet.
Perfect, thank you.
And Mr. Simon?
Yeah, sure.
I, I just want to make something clear to you, you know, I don't want to, I don't want you to think I was, you know, trying to disrespect you in any way. Uh, my main concern with the tractor trailers and the turning and the, and the S turn and everything is, is roadway safety. Okay, that's the biggest concern is the safety of these roadways when, when we have these movements, okay? For the residents, for non-residents that are cutting through our town, you know, going from town to town, that's at the end of the day, the biggest issue is safety for the buses, the kids, cars, everything. That's it, you know, I'm not trying to make this a big deal. I'm just trying to understand how all these movements are going to be made in a safe way. Thank you.
And Mr. Legio, I think that's kind of what I was trying to get across earlier.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mrs. Bean. I'm, it, it, it's just like I said, we, it seems like from the last meeting to this meeting, it, we talking a little bit in circles with Mrs. Pinky and us and, you know, I, 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 I'm sorry that it got a little mixed up, but.
No, I, I agree, but I think that that's the ultimate goal of my questioning, your questioning and others questioning the turning movements, especially considering we don't know who is going to be in the building.
The intersection is, 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 is very tight.
It's, it's a, it's a rough intersection at best and this could potentially make it worse. So that, I think that's the concern that the board has, which I'm trying to express.
You're the professional and, and you, you, with the master plan, you know every road in this town ver- very well, so do I. And I do too. I lived here a long time, but I'm with you and that's all we're try- trying to get our.
A hundred percent agree. So I, I'm just trying to say like, that's been the concern with respect to the questioning up till now, correct?
Correct, one hundred percent. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, can I just ask, uh, Ms. Pinky? Are you there? There, thank you. So, so you, you just, you just heard um, a couple of the comments uh, from a bo- board member, from board planner. Um, you know, and they are concerned about the safety of the roadway when, when you have these movements. Uh, can you just again, provide your opinion as to um, safety of the roadway as a result of this proposed project?
Yeah, of course. So I think um, with what we're proposing at the curve, um, we're certainly addressing the conditions there and improving the safety there. Um, you know, adding boarding signs as well as you know, the, the raised pavement markers and reducing the speed limit um, for the curve itself. In relation to um, the right turns at Victory and Lakewood, um, you know, we were asked to look at the right turn and what they look like. Uh, school buses today are making that right turn and they encroach over the center lines um, and per DOT standards, um, given the majority of traffic making that turn is a patent passenger car vehicle, um, the intersection does not need to be designed for those larger vehicles as long as they're not significantly impacting the traffic, which per the truck training tablets we prepared for both single unit size as well as that WB sixty-seven. Uh, we feel it's in line with that NJ DOT uh, design criteria.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Shoot, probably for maybe Jen Bean, maybe, I don't know, um. So they're widening the roadway by three feet. Does that, is that still township property or are they encroaching on other people's properties to widen this road? Jen, did you hear that?
I'm sorry, I, I heard the half end of it, like.
Okay, so I just wanted to know that they're widening it by three feet. Does this encroach, is this on township property or does it encroach on other people's properties?
They're going to have to, I, it's not township property. They're going to have to, i- if it's, okay, so I don't know exactly. And I would like respectfully defer to Kevin. But like the widening, is it within the right-of-way or is it going to require right-of-way acquisition? I don't know. That's not like, Kevin, are you? Kevin, are you, did you look at that?
Uh, respectfully, uh. I did not because the right-of-way lines were not uh shown on this plan.
Okay.
I would like to ask the question to Ms. Panky if possible, Ms. Panky, do you happen to know? Uh, if the uh township, if the proposed two to three-foot widening that you show on the concept plan. Do you happen to know if that's within the township right-of-way or it does that encroach into the other uh right-of-way?
Yes, the concept we laid out does have it within the right-of-way for the pavement widening. And we expect it to be in the wide, the the right-of-way when we uh would do the design plans as well.
Does that require any widening to do that?
The the widening itself is within the existing public right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay, so you took the S curve that we were concerned about and replaced it with an S curve?
Uh softened it out, right, you, I mean, I'm.
We softened it up.
Right, like I'm not gonna get into the technical terms, but like you softened it, correct? You softened that.
Correct, yeah, I mean, we're constrained by um the right-of-way that's out there, you know, we can't go across some of its property, so um. But it's within the existing right-of-way.
It's definitely softened, correct?
Yes.
By three feet.
Oh, sorry, I wanted to fa- ask a follow-up for Miss Panky, I apologize. Um, also, the uh signposts along the curb of beside the widening, are those also within the township right-of-way to the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, I have no, I have no further questions at this point on this issue, Mr. uh Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one additional question, on the uh, what what's what's the shoulder of the road like? Is it, is it a drop-off? How is that in those, the S curve area?
The just in just the S curve area?
Yeah.
Um, so the the shoulder, there's no significant drop-off with the.
All right, so.
It's pretty flat out there.
So guardrails would not be considered in this because of the speed, the lower speed and all that?
Correct, there there's no grading that would suggest the use of a guardrail, that's correct.
Okay, so anybody else from the board? Okay, um. Mr. Lieberman.
That's all. Um, good evening, everybody, I'm Stuart Lieberman, I represent uh the neighbors that I've identified previously. Ms. Panky, let me start with you in light of the uh constraints that were expressed by council, um. With regard to Exhibit A forty, uh, that's what I want to discuss first with you. What is the width of a truck, the tractor-trailer, a full-blown tractor-trailer truck, including the uh side mirrors? In other words, side mirror to side mirror generally, what's the width?
So Carrie, first of all, um, Mr. Lieberman referenced an exhibit, so why don't you uh make reference to that exhibit?
Uh, so A forty is the exhibit, um, and I believe off the top of my head. Um, the trailer width is under nine feet, I believe it's been like eight feet, eight and a half, I'm not sure off the top.
Is there, is there some way we can bring the exhibit up? Yeah, great.
All right, so the so the width is is um is is wider than the cab, e- even mirror to mirror, is that correct?
I I don't know, the I know the average width is eight, eight and a half feet um of the tractor width. Um, the trailer width, I believe, is eight and a half, so I think the cab width is eight.
All right, so so you've got eight and a half by eight and a half is seventeen feet, what is the width of that S turn without the improvement?
Uh, I believe it varies along the curve.
So what what is the, what is the narrowest width?
I know the lanes are twelve feet wide, the shoulder varies across, I could can't tell you what the narrowest width is.
All right, so so in its current state, you've got approximately twenty-four feet of cart. Uh, what do they call cart, what's it called?
The cartway.
Yeah, the cartway is about twenty-four feet, is that right?
Yes, approximately.
And and you've got two trucks passing each other, each seventeen feet wide, that gives you a margin. Of seven feet, is that right? Yeah, that gives you a margin of seven feet, now, you indicated that with your. The the biggest problem with this turn was that it obscured the trucks from. One truck or a car from seeing another truck coming from another direction, wasn't that the biggest problem with it? Would you agree with me?
Well, uh uh objection only in that I don't know what it means by the biggest problem, Ms. Panky, if you understand the question, you can answer.
I will do it, I will do it, from a safety perspective, what was your understanding of the issue that you were trying to cure by adding the three feet?
For vehicles to be able to pass safely with each other side by side.
That's what that allows you to do, but would you agree with me that because this is an S turn, there's also a visual obscurity issue?
Uh uh objection, I don't know what you mean by visual obscurity.
But do, uh, does the, does the traffic planner understand what I mean?
I'm not sure I understand what the question you're asking.
The fact that it's an S turn make it difficult for vehicles coming from one direction to see vehicles approaching from the other direction?
Depends what direction you're driving on the curve, but that would be any curve condition.
I- in this particular case, is there a particular direction where a driver come, is there a particular part of the S turn where a driver coming from one direction? Has i- is visually obscured from seeing a vehicle coming from another direction because.
Mr. Mr. Lieberman, I just want to, I just want to, hold on, Ms. Panky. I just want to ask for clarification that with regard to this question as as well as any questions along this line of questioning. Are you, are you talking still about the existing condition? Are you talking about um after the improvements as proposed?
Only the existing condition.
Thank you for the clarification.
So I think my clarification is more what distance you're referring to, because if I'm on the east side of the curve and the car's on the west side of the curve. You know, I'm I'm not going to see them because it's a curve. So it depends what distance you're asking that you think they should be seeing each other.
So so if you're on the east side, which part of this drawing shows the the east side?
Um, Plan East, um.
Right, so so if you were on the east side of the S. Near the top of the S, I mean, you know, as you go up, yeah, where you're where where you are there. It's going to be difficult for you to see cars on the west side near where the match line is, is that correct?
It's a curve, yes.
It's a curve, and widening the road does nothing to address that issue, right?
Widening the road allows the vehicles to be able to pass each other, uh, see for conditions at the proposed. Um, posted advisory speed, I mean, that's a, that's what you're talking about, is a condition on on any curve.
I understand that, but what I just want to make it clear though, that what, that the only benefit by widening the road. Is that it makes it possible for the two trucks to pass, but it does nothing to address. A visual obscurity issue of the nature that we just talked about, is that?
Uh 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 objection, I I I don't think you can say, Mr. Lieberman, the the only benefit, and you're talking about two elements. Of the turn, I think Ms. Panky talked about a bunch of things in her direct, but she can answer the question. Do you understand the question, Ms. Panky?
Yeah, so I mean, they're they're two different things, um, you know, by allowing them to be able to pass safely, um. You know, they'll be able to go along the curve more easily, um, visual obscurity, it doesn't really um. Influence that in that way because they have the room to navigate within their own lane as would the opposing vehicle.
Now, this is a three-foot uh addition that you're adding by going into the right-of-way, correct?
Uh approximately.
Is it three feet or is it more or less three feet or is it less than three?
It's it's more or less three feet, it's it's a concept plan, so it's not specifically designed out, um. So I don't have the exact number, like I said, it varies along the curve.
Well, since you're talking about. Three feet and not thirty feet or forty feet, do you know whether you're actually going to have three feet? Do you know what?
Yes, we know the widening we're proposing is within the existing public right-of-way.
Is that three feet or is it less than three feet or more than three feet?
It varies.
Is it at least three feet anywhere?
It's it's at least three feet.
Okay.
Along its wider point, at least.
Okay, now, that means it's roughly, is this, am I correct in saying that that means it's really one and a half feet on each side?
No, it's at least three feet.
It's three feet on both sides?
Correct.
So du- for the duration of the entire S, will there be an extra three feet, full three feet on both sides?
No, it's at its wider point, it it's going to vary, so ca- can I actually bring up um A forty-one? Um, I think this will kind of help in our visual, um, so showing the plan, so we ran the truck templates for this um with the widening. Um, so if you want to zoom into that that curve where the widening is, thank you so much, um, you could see the outer part of the truck template. Um, runs along where we're showing the proposed widening um to allow these trucks to safely pass each other. Which is why we have varying widths for for what we need along the curve.
But when I look at that. On the, you know, I don't have a cursor where I could do this thing, but on the top. You know, if you go to the top of the page where the S starts, I see the widening on both sides, right? Can you put your cursor sort of, yeah, that, so I do, but then as you proceed to the left of the page and go down the S. The widening ends on the inner part of the curve. And you, and and so there, there's no corresponding widening on that, on that lane, it's only on the other lane, is that correct?
Correct.
What, why can't you give that additional width throughout the entire S, both sides of the S?
So we didn't, we didn't find it was needed.
Well.
As we're showing on the plan, um, the trucks are within the their lane, um, and within the pavement sections.
Okay, now, this works in order for this, I'm going to call it a fix, and if you don't like the word, you can correct me, please, but. In order for this proposed fix to work, it does require, in your professional estimation, a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on that curve, is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
Now, are there any statistics in terms of how drivers generally react to a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit that you're aware of?
Uh, what what do you mean by statistics and generally react?
She's a traffic engineer, the question is, in her field, is she aware of any data, any statistics, either at the national level or at the state level? That indicates how drivers generally react to a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit?
Uh, no, Mr. Lieberman, when I'm asking about generally re- react, are you talking about in terms of speed or something else?
Only speed, I've not.
Thank you.
If they, if it puts a smile on their face or whatever, no, yeah, I appreciate your question, Mr. Simon, I'm talking about speed, do they tend? Tending to the, cunning to the chase, do they tend to adhere to it or not, what, and or do you not know? Maybe there's no doubt.
I I'm not aware of any statistics.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, but this, but this fix in order to work at its maximum, in your professional opinion. Requires fairly strict adherence to that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, right?
Uh 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 objection, um, because I don't know what wo- works to the maximum, but you can answer the question, Ms. Panky.
I'll rephrase it because I don't want any objections in the record, in order for the fix that you are suggesting. It's dependent on trucks adhering to the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, correct?
It's the advisory speed we're proposing, yes.
And what's the speed now?
Fifty miles per hour.
So the recommendation is is that, and and where would it drop from from fifty to twenty-five, where would that happen?
So if we go to A forty exhibit, um, to the right, um. We would be replacing the existing curve signing um with the proposed advisory speed. Um, that W one-five R warning of the curve as well as the twenty-five mile per hour advisory speed. And then following that sign is the truck tipping sign, which also will have the proposed advisory speed of twenty-five miles per hour.
Okay, now, um, thank you, Ms. Ms. Panky, for that, for that clarification, I do appreciate it, um, let's please go to um.
Can I interrupt for one minute? Can we stop sharing because Nick Husser is now in the audience, I want to bring him into the meeting, thank you.
Okay, can I continue?
Just one second, you you can continue as long as you don't need an exhibit.
No, I can't even show exhibits, I wouldn't know how to.
No, you're fine now, thank you.
Welcome. Can we please go to Exhibit forty-three? Now, one of your statements that you made concerning your testimony. Uh, relating to the turn from Victory Road to Lakewood Farmingdale Road is that school buses do it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, you realize that school buses have routes that are dependent on where children happen to live. And these are children who by law have to go to school, you have an understanding that that's how truck routes are established, right?
Yes.
And so you would expect.
When you say, Stuart, you said truck routes, you, did you say bus, you have bus routes is what you meant, right?
I I it is, thank you, school bus routes is what I meant, thank you, and um. What is, you're not suggesting that the fact that a school bus. Is compelled to make that turn because it has to service those children? That that makes this a safe intersection, you're not suggesting that, right?
The purpose of the school bus here was to show that on a vehicle of similar size, um, making the same movement. Um, will also encroach on the center line, um, it wasn't to make any suggestions about the school bus, whether they have to or not do it. It was for comparison purpose for similar vehicles.
Appreciate that, and according to the design standards. And I I they're uniform design standards, right, they're not NJ DOT specific, they're, are they uniform?
There's a lot of design standards, what are you referring to?
Ones that you're adhering to and you're a- and that you relied upon. Um, in terms of the testimony that you provided today, you will, you referenced design standards, which ones were they, were they DOT standards? Were they more uniform?
So the design says I was referring to as far as encroachment, um, was the NJ DOT standards, I also referenced MUTC standards. And um, the a lot of these truck templates are based on ASHTO standards, um, which are all widely accepted.
Okay, and for those ASCO standards, the utility of this kind of turn. Is somewhat dependent on the number of large trucks that are anticipated using the 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 interchange, isn't that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I don't understand it either.
That's okay, it was my understanding from your testimony that one of the reasons. You testified that this would be an acceptable right-hand turn. Is because you didn't anticipate that there would be that many large tractor-trailers doing it, is that what you said, or did I mistake your testimony?
No, yes, correct, that and that's based on the NJ DOT roadway design manual.
Right, right, and so how many trucks is too many? What percentage is too many for the purpose of that analysis and testimony?
And and I I think it's important, Mr. Lieberman, to clarify again for the record. In your question, what do you mean in terms of, we talking about a certain type of truck? We talking, talking about a certain movement in terms of size of the truck, just just so that Ms. Panky can provide you an accurate answer.
I'm going to turn it over. Excuse me, Mr. Simon, you're making a lot of objections and you're not letting the chair or myself answer them. And frankly, the witness has a problem with the question, why can't she just say I don't understand the question? You keep saying that for her.
Mm, Ms. Rizzuto, I'm I'm just trying to make sure that the record is clear and because I don't understand the record. And somebody else who's who may be looking at a transcript may not understand the record, I'm just trying to make sure that the record. Is clear and the question is clear so that the witness can provide an accurate answer, that's.
Yes, I understand, this is cross-examination and Mr. Lieberman has a certain amount of of. Free rein in how he wants to style his cross-examination, he keeps agreeing with you. When you make an objection, but in you keep making objections that you don't understand the question.
But I'm I'm just questioning, what what I'm questioning.
Witness, you don't have to answer.
No, I'm I'm just questioning some use of language, i- and Mr. Lieberman, to his credit, who I know well. Um, has been agreeing with me because he, I'm sure agrees that we want to have a clean, clear record. has been agreeing with me because he, I'm sure, agrees that we want to have a clean, clear record and not have a fight later on as to whether the witness, you know, misunderstood the question or not. That's all. I'm just trying to help the record.
Mr. Simon, Mr. Simon, the honest truth is, I agreed with you because I didn't plan to be overly combative with you about issues that weren't that important to me. And that's really the reason. I thought my questions were, but I, but let me, let me rephrase. The the point is this, the truck I was talking about was the truck the witness was talking about. In other words, the witness's general testimony was this, this type of turn would be acceptable pursuant to whatever standard she was relying on, as long as there weren't many tractor trailer trucks. I think that's what I said, she said, and she agreed that's what she said. So however it is she defines tractor trailer trucks, that's the definition that I'd like her to use. I'm not giving her.
Thank you. That's perfect. That's perfect. Thank you, Stuart. Yeah.
Of course, you're welcome. And so what, and so using your definition of tractor trailer, Ms. Penkey, what percentage or numerically, how many would be too many?
So NJ DOT doesn't define a number of trucks. They use that same language, the occasional truck. So the infrequent truck. So that's the standard that we're following.
So it's your belief that if this warehouse is built, that it will not result in anything more than an infrequent truck trying to make that turn? Is that what your testimony is?
Yes.
Um, and and yet you don't know, and of course, I'm not going to spend time on this, except for to point out again, you don't know what the tenants are or what kinds of trucks would be leaving or the direction they'd be going in. You're not sure at this time because you don't have a tenant. Is that accurate?
Yes, we don't know a specific tenant.
Okay. And so if you had a tenant who who was going in that direction with large trucks because of the nature of their operations, that could turn this from an intersection that would be considered to be acceptable by DOT and other standards to an intersection that would no longer be considered acceptable just by the basis, just because of the additional tractor trailers that could be incorporated. Is that accurate?
So in my opinion, any tenant that's going to be at this type of warehouse, these types of trucks are going to be frequented towards I, the I one ninety-five interchange, as I testified.
Um, let me see what other term. Thank you, ma'am. And let me just keep going. Would you agree?
That wasn't the question you asked her.
I, we don't know the tenant, so I can't speak to a specific tenant.
That's her answer. So let me, let me ask you this. Would you, do you know, is your tenant, maybe this was covered too? And if it was, please just let me know and I can move right on. Did your client agree to restrict trucks from turning left out of the site onto Victory Road? Does that come up?
That's correct.
They did. You agreed, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, what did you explain? And and if you did, I missed it. Now, I'm not gonna, I'm sorry. I don't want to take more time than I need to. But what, what are you doing to ensure that trucks only make the right turn? Are there going to be physical constraints on the curbing or something of that nature, or is it just signage?
As we're proposing signage.
So it is so the only control at this time that you're envisioning to make sure that the trucks only turn right is a right turn only sign or something to that effect for trucks?
Correct, something to that effect. I think it's trucks know left turns.
Okay, um, and and do you feel within a reasonable degree of of certainty? Excuse me, it's the road standard. But do you, do you agree as a professional that that physical constraints in in terms of the egress are more effective in terms of ensuring that left turns don't happen? And if you don't know what I mean by physical constraints, I can explain them. Do you understand my question?
Like an island is what you're asking.
Yes, I'm, for example, I've seen instances where curbs are designed in a certain way that the trucks sort of only can go one way, or I've seen gates that are sort of half open and stop them. I've seen a variety of things, and I don't know what would be employed. But do you, are you familiar with what I'm talking about? And do you have an understanding as to whether in general they tend to do a better job at stopping tractor trailers from making turns that are unwanted?
Yes.
Is there a reason why that hasn't been proposed or considered, or I don't know if it's been considered, but why it hasn't been proposed in this case?
It's something we can look into.
So I would like to know what it is because then the question will be, how easy is it for a tractor trailer to circumvent that? So I don't know what you're going to do, but that's what I would, I'm not the board and I can't ask you to do things, and I'm not. But, you know, I know my clients would be interested in that. I believe you showed on one of your exhibits, there was an example of a truck turning onto the site from the west. Do you, do you remember that exhibit?
I believe that was shown during the site civil testimony. I don't recall the exhibit number. You're talking about the truck turning templates on site?
I think it was.
Just exhibit A thirty-one?
Yes.
I didn't, I did not testify to this exhibit.
Okay, okay. Well, from a traffic standpoint, do you have an expectation that trucks will be turning from the west? Or do you have no expectation as to that issue?
I, the, the trucks are going to be directed to travel to and from the east. There's no expectation.
There is no expectation. I might not have any other questions for you at this time, but let me just check my notes before I say goodbye. Hold on one second. Yeah, for you, ma'am, I have no other questions, and I thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let me.
So before you continue, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
All right, so we'll be back in five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The board will now take a five-minute recess. The planning board will now reconvene.
All right, ma'am, should I, Matt, Mr. Chairman, should I continue?
Yep.
Okay, thank you again. It's Stuart Lieberman for the record, continuing the course examination. Sorry, I have a call that I'm dealing with. May I have the engineer, the the site engineer, Mr. Simon?
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
He's in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And what is, please refresh my memory as to the engineer's name.
Pong Tolan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. There you are. Thank you. It's good to see you again. I have some questions for you about the engineering, sir. So I My understanding is that when you construct the facility, you're going to be elevating it by adding some fill. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you're going to have to import some amount of fill in order to accomplish this, yes? Um, do you know how many cubic yards of fill you're gonna have to bring in?
Not at the moment.
If if I were to tell you that our engineers estimated it to be approximately eighty-seven thousand cubic yards, does that sound correct to you?
I don't know. I haven't conducted my math yet.
So do you have any idea at all in terms of a approximation of fill, or you can't answer that either? Okay, um, in in any event, it's your understanding that fill is going to have to be imported. And in addition to that, you're going to also have to remove topsoil from the site when you do your twelve to thirteen acre clearing. Isn't that correct?
It's possible.
Well, you're clear cutting the site, right? That portion?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lieberman, when you say, yeah, if you can rephrase the question in terms of what portion you're talking about.
Well, is there an approximate thirteen, twelve to thirteen acre portion of the site that's going to be clear cut?
Yes.
Okay, and when you clear cut it, you're going to be taking everything, the trees and the soil, including the topsoil, correct?
I don't have to remove it. Then we move the trees, yes.
Okay, is it your plan to keep the topsoil on site? Or or have you not made a determination?
No determination yet.
Okay, are you aware that Howell has an ordinance concerning topsoil and requires that it stay within Howell? And that you cannot leave out?
That's fine.
Okay, are you aware of that?
I am.
Okay, and are you aware that if you have over a certain amount of of soil, if you have over six hundred cubic yards of topsoil that you are exporting from the site, you have to have a site plan approved for both the site from which it's coming from and the site to which it's going. Are you aware of that?
I am at now.
Okay, and well, in particular, just so you know that, and I'm sure you do, the ordinance is one eighty-eight dash twenty-six. Um, do you have any plans on seeking site plan approval for soil removal?
Well, Mr. Lieberman, I don't know if, well, Mr. Lamb, can you answer, can you answer the question? I think that's a question for certainly the applicant. If if you're asking the applicant whether it seeks to comply with one eighty-eight dash twenty-six, I mean, the answer is yes, but I'll certainly take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I I want to know whether or not he plans on taking away enough soil so that it's going to be warranted. It has to be at least six hundred cubic yards. That's that. That's what I want to know. And he doesn't know yet. Is that correct? Okay, okay. In order for you to bring in the required amount of fill uh, in order to build up this site in the matter in which you indicated you have to, how many trucks, do you know how many trucks are going to have to be are going to have to go back and forth on the roads?
No, I answered the question. I don't know the amount, so I don't know the number of trucks.
Okay, but you'd agree with me that one triaxle dump truck typically handles sixteen cubic yards of soil? Is that your understanding?
Sounds about right.
And and do you have, are you going to be submitting any plans? Do you, have you evaluated what type of impact that will have on the local roads if you have many trucks? And the reason I'm asking is that if it was eighty-seven thousand cubic yards, which is what we estimated, we, it's not confirmed by you, and I appreciate that. That could result, you know, based on sixteen cubic yards, you're talking about thousands and thousands of truckloads. Do you, if if that were the case, would you plan on having some kind of plan, safety plan, to ensure that the roads are protected? And that they don't get beaten up and 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 that there isn't dust and all those things associated with that much truck, truck movement?
Yeah, there's soil erosion measures, there's pre-construction meeting that needs to occur prior to start construction. Items like these would be discussed. We're not at that stage at this time.
Do you know how long it would take? Well, you don't know how many tons are coming in yet, so you can't tell me how many weeks it would take to bring in the soil, can you?
No.
Would you estimate that that movement would be on a twenty-four, seven sort of basis, or would it be less than that?
No, we're adhered to township requirements on when we could do construction.
Now, in terms, thank you, sir. And in terms of the stormwater system that you gave testimony about, is there, if you look at ET, at E two on your stormwater plan, can you go to the section that's marked as E two in your stormwater drainage and see where that is on your plan?
Which plan are you looking at?
Your drainage plan. Didn't you submit a drainage plan?
So you're talking about exhibit A three? Is that what you're referring to?
Let me take a look at it and I'll let you know.
Stuart, are you wanting somebody to put it up on the screen?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I I was was anticipating that that would happen. I'm sorry, I didn't ask for that. In my mind, I thought you were doing it, and I maybe didn't have any reason to believe that. So would you, would you be so kind as to make that picture available? That 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 drawing available?
So you're referring to exhibit A three sheet C dash four oh two, is that correct?
It is, yes. I think that's right. It's the existing conditions drainage plan. Is that what that's called? And it is.
No, that is a drainage plan.
Okay, do you, do you have an existing conditions drainage plan?
Are you talking about existing conditions on his site plan?
Well, I think there was a plan called existing conditions drainage plan that showed where pre-development drainage goes.
Mr. Lieberman, if you were Ms. Ferguson, can I can identify the plan sheet? We'd be happy to, of course.
I, I appreciate it. Ms. Ferguson, see if you could help me with that, please. Let me try to get, do you, can you give me a little more, a little better information on that? I I think I could do that, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ferguson. You're referring to exhibit A nine, which is a stormwater report. And this page four hundred and seventy-nine of four hundred and eighty-one out of the PDF. Is that correct?
I I don't think they're looking for the stormwater management report. I think they're looking for an actual plan.
Yes.
I actually.
At the end of it.
This is the correct one.
That's it. Ferguson, that's it, isn't it?
Okay, that's exhibit eighty-nine.
Thank you.
It is PDF page four seventy-nine out of four eighty-one of the stormwater management report.
Okay. Okay, on the left-hand side of the drainage plan, is there something identified as the, as a watershed to which the current drainage is generally going?
There's a portion labeled as E two.
Yes.
Small portion of site, yes, that's going to page south.
And so generally, in its undeveloped state, stormwater is flowing in that direction. Is it sheet flowing generally in that direction? Is that fair to say?
Very small amount of area, yes.
And and then, once it gets to that area, it tends to move away from the property in question. Is that accurate?
This flows to page south for a small portion, which is two point two nine three acres of the site.
Thank you. Now, in the proposal that you've set forth, you are installing a perforated pipe from that drainage area to go to a, to go to the basin, which is sort of on the other side of the site. Is that accurate?
There is a perforated pipe being proposed along the southern property line.
And that perforated pipe takes the effluent with the drainage. I guess it's not effluent in this type of work. It's the, it takes the stormwater drainage and it 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 channels it to the basin, yes?
Yes.
And that's.
Number four.
And it. And it basin number four, yes. And then, and so it's taking it, and so it will in some manner interfere with current drainage. Because it's going to take the drainage that in undeveloped conditions would have moved away from the project, and instead it's going to take that stormwater and move it in the direction of that basin that you're creating. Is that accurate?
I have two drainage area, point of interest, and I have to provide reduction to both of them.
Okay, but, but the perforated pipe that we're talking about, that's going from that, uh, area to the, on the bottom left of the site that we initially talked about, is going to that one particular basin, correct?
Yes.
Okay, basin four, I think it's called, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, now, um, from, a- and, and the pipe that's taking the water there is perforated, yes?
Yes.
And so by being perforated, it allows for uh, stormwater to, uh, infiltrate, uh, stormwater to infiltrate to, uh, I can't remember what you call it, so it, it allows it to infiltrate into the ground, uh, i- to some extent, yes?
That's not the design intent, but sure.
Well, it's perforated, so there's an understanding that because it is perforated, some of the stormwater that's traveling in it is going to naturally be absorbed in the ground that's underlies it, yes?
If you say so, that's not my design intent, that's my answer.
So if it wasn't your design intent, why'd you put holes in the bottom of the pipe?
Because it's a traditional French drain, and that's how you construct a French drain.
Okay, so the purpose of the French drain is to prevent water from coming into the system or from leaving the system? What is it, what does it do in this context?
I'm collecting the runoff at the property line.
Yes.
Directing them to a onsite feature that would provide water quality and quantity reduction.
That pipe is perforated and surrounded by crushed stone on both sides, correct?
Yes.
Okay, once it goes into that basin, basin four, any infiltration that doesn't occur, then is channeled in a pipe up to Victory Road where it runs into an inlet, is that correct?
Yes.
And then from that inlet, there are two inlets on the other side of the street, if I, if I've got this correctly, by the concrete plant, and some of that water goes there as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the pipes in question, the pipe in question, um, have you, have you determined what the depth to groundwater is as it relates to that pipe, and whether or not it is two feet from the, whether or not the pipe is two feet from the seasonal high water table?
What pipe are you talking about?
The pipe that we're talking about, the, the, and I'll be more specific for you, the perforated pipe that is taking the, conveying the stormwater from the bottom left to basin four, which is surrounded by crushed stone, is a stormwater feature, isn't it?
It's a pipe. And it's also. Infiltration basin, it does not have to be meet the two and a half, two feet separation that you're referring to.
Okay, so I, I, so I want to make sure I understand it. It's your testimony that doesn't have to meet the two feet separation.
It's not infiltration basin.
Okay, okay, we'll leave it there for now, that's fine. Um. Now, the water that goes to Victory Road, do you have an understanding as to whether or not flooding is frequently encountered on Victory Road in pre, pre-development? In, in the current pre-development condition?
Oh, just recently onsite, after a weekend of rain, I did not see any ponding on row.
So you're not, so your testimony is, is that Victory Road in that area doesn't flood, or this one time you didn't see?
When I was onsite on Tuesday, after this long weekend of rain, I did not witness ponding.
Um, have you determined whether the pre-existing pipes that connect the infill, the infill pipes in that area can handle the extra capacity?
Uh, 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 objection only because I don't really, and can you just repeat the question?
That's okay, the infill, uh, the, the three infills on Victory Road, right, because there's one, I don't mean infill, I'm sorry, that's why it's a bad question, I'm in an inlet, I used the wrong word, I'm sorry. The three inlets on Victory Road, um, are connected by, uh, there are pipes that connect them to various features, right?
Yes, there's stormpipes there currently.
Have you determined what the capacity of that existing piping is? And whether or not it will be able to handle the additional, uh, stormwater that you anticipate is going, that those inlets are going to see?
Yes, we ran it. Currently, our sway is designed, and we also ran a very conservative analysis from a sensitivity standpoint. We model a tailwater condition of seventy-one, which is a foot above the current roadway, and it still works.
How long did you do that modeling for?
Say that again?
How long, d- did you model it, computer modeling, or did you actually introduce water?
It's computer model, I can't flood the row.
How long did you, how much water was anticipated in that computer analysis and for what duration?
I assumed the entire existing drainage system within Victory Row has a standing water a foot above the row.
Do you know the width of the pipes that are underneath the inlets?
Fifteen inches.
Is that because you inspected them, or did you see as built?
I rely on my survey and was also onsite.
And from being above ground, you were able to see the size of the pipes that are in question?
As measured with a stick, just like a surveyor would.
Excuse me, I, I, um, I think I have one more, two more questions for you, and I'm, uh, did you also do the testimony concerning the tree, um, ordinance and your, how you're going to comply, or was that somebody else?
Yes, where we move a certain amount of trees is on the plans, and we have a review letter from CME, and we're in agreement with how much trees we're moving and what the fund needs to be for the tree replacement.
That's, I'm gonna have a question or two for you about that. I just wanted to make sure that I had the right person here, and I appreciate that I do. Um, just give me a minute, please, I just need to find my notes, because I had another question that I wanted to ask you, and I just need to find it. Okay. Do, on your stormwater plans, do you see underground infiltration basin number five? And if you could. If you could show that on the screen, I'd appreciate it.
Referring back to exhibit A nine, PDF page number four eighty or four eighty-one. And that is to a page south of the building, that's the underground basin number five.
Are you putting the cursor in that general area? Is that where it is?
No.
Can you put it in the general area where the basin is, please?
South side of the building.
Okay.
Bob, Richard. Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Um, how many test pits or borings did you take underneath that particular infiltration basin, do you know?
Well, we leave it was two.
We only see one, are you sure there were two?
It's test pitch twenty-seven and test pit twenty-eight, so there's two.
Okay, are both underneath the basin area, or are they adjacent?
They are within the basin footprint as shown on this sheet of the exhibit.
Are they on the sides of the basin or in the deep end?
What do you refer to as the side, and what do you refer as deep end?
Are they on the vertical sides of the basin, or are they more in the, are they underneath the bottom of the basin?
They're within the basin footprint, I still don't understand your question.
Would you please look at sheet C six oh one? And, and would you please go to MH number ten?
So you're referring to exhibit A three right now. Sheet C six oh one, which is EF page nine.
Yes.
And what was your question again?
If you'd please go to P R, P R O P period MH number ten.
Uh, uh, Mr. Lieberman, are you asking him to, um, enlarge the area where there's a proposed manhole?
Well, let, yeah, let's go to tha- that area, please, and, and enlarge it if you would.
Manhole ten, which is to the page right of the underground basin number five.
Okay, now, do you know what the invert of the pipe directing water out of the inlet is?
Seventy-one fifty-seven.
Okay, and are you able to tell me what the elevation of the same pipe is? The same pipe run is into P R, into manhole number nine?
Sixty-eight seventy-two.
Yes, and, um, the test pits for the seasonal high water table, doesn't TP twen, isn't TP twenty-one in that vicinity? And doesn't it depict the seasonal high water table of seventy point two?
Which test pit are you referring to again?
Twenty-one? And what is the season, do you have it, can you depict what the seasonal high water elevation is there?
I'm still trying to find. Yeah, yeah, wait, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lieberman. Yeah, can we, can we just back up, and the only reason I'm asking is that so that the witness can, you know, identify and locate the area that you want him to locate?
Oh, no, of course, of course.
Test pitch twenty-one, seasonal high elevation seventy point two.
Seventy point two, um, and, and, and test point seventeen, is it seventy-three point four?
Yes.
And test pit eighteen seventy-three point eight?
I gotta find eighteen first.
Yep.
Like there's eighteen seventy-three point eight.
So, that means then that the, uh, that, that the, I'm sorry, that the pipe in question, the pipe that we were, uh, looked at originally, the pipe that was directing water out of the inlet, isn't that below the seasonal high water table?
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Lieberman. I, I just want you to, just for the record, identify which pipe you're referring to. Just so the witness understands, because there's a lot here.
No, that's fine, the pipe that runs into manhole number nine that we were looking at before. That's, that's.
The pipe between manhole number ten and manhole number nine.
Yep.
Yes, it's below seasonal high.
It's below the season, the, the seasonal high, isn't that a problem, and would that cause inundation? Why is that no?
It's a conveyance pipe.
Does it meet the stormwater requirements for that to be below the seasonal high water table?
There's no requirement about a storm pipe within or outside of the seasonal high.
I don't have any other, thank you, sir, and I don't have any other questions for this witness. Do you have, uh, the representative from Ethel sign it here?
What, what, which witness that provided testimony?
The one who did the testimony, I think they did on the environmental impact report. Did you, did we have testimony on that, or no?
Um, we submitted such a report, but I don't believe we've had anyone specifically testify. I don't know if the board requested that some testimony be provided uh, in support of the report. So we have not provided a witness to date with regard to, uh, that report.
Well, okay.
Not, not to say that, you know, we're, we're foreclosed of doing so, certainly, but.
Well, that's okay, I have questions about the, the report that I want.
Why, 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 why don't you, Mr. Lieberman, um, let's, let's first finish with the, with the witness for cross-examination purposes, the witnesses who provided direct testimony so far.
Yeah, I don't believe I have any other, oh, um, no, I did the claim. Well, okay, oh, yeah, the, the, the same witness, I'm, can you bring, would you ask him to forgive me and bring him back for one more? I was gonna ask him about the tree.
I, I'm, I'm gonna ask him to forgive you first, and then we'll bring him back. All right, I'll think about it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, well, I hope you come my way. All right, um, my question uh, concerning the tree ordinance is, based on my review um, of, of the written materials, is it true that only two percent was sampled as compared to the five percent that's required under the ordinance?
We provide two test plots, is that what you're referring to? I don't understand your question.
A tree ordinance requires that there be a sampling of five percent of the representative trees in the area, isn't that correct? Isn't that what it requires?
You, um, Mr. Lieberman, do you want to refer, uh, Mr. Lamb to what section you're, you're referring to specifically?
I mean, the answer is yes, but yes, you can go to the section of ordinance, but the answer is yes.
The, um, let's see if I have it in my notes, the exact, I just have it references the how, how will treat clearing ordinance as requiring a person to sample a representative five percent of the wooded area um, in agreement with the relevant agencies, so it's up to them to indicate what's acceptable, but it's, it's, according to the language of the ordinance, it seems to indicate five percent. I, I don't have an ordinance number, Mr. Simon, I'm just referring to it in my.
That, that, that's okay, Miss Bean was helpful to, to help, help clarify that.
So my question is, it appears that based on the written submissions, something like two percent was sampled, and I want to know, is my, is my assumption correct? You know, I'm gleaning it from your materials, but maybe I'm wrong. And if it is, why didn't you sample the five percent? Is there a particular reason, if that's so?
I didn't have to math right now in front of me, but I, like I said, I provided two test plots under indicator on my sheet C dash seven oh seven of exhibit A three, and that has been accepted, and the review letter has been generated, and we have the calculation provided.
So, to understand my question though, is it correct that you can't testify one way or the other as to whether the five percent reference in the ordinance was satisfied?
I can't answer this question right at this moment.
I'm going to take one more look at my notes, and I believe I haven't finished with my cross, but let me just make sure. Are you familiar with an inlet that's on the south side of Victory Road? Inlet B, no, you know what? I asked you questions about that inlet before. And even though I didn't identify it as inlet B, I did ask you those questions, and I don't choose to be redundant. At this time, I don't have any other questions on cross-examination, and I thank the witnesses for their courtesy. Now, Mr. Chairman, I have witnesses available to provide testimony. Is it your desire that they go now? The only reason I asked you, you indicated that before, but I don't know if you're adhering to that still.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, you know, we have a ten o'clock stop, but, um, yeah, I'd like to get your witnesses on the record.
It's fine. I think we could do that. Let's start with, um, Mr. Gaul, please.
I'm gonna bring both your witnesses in for now, so they'll be in there if you need them.
We'll see how it goes tonight, but thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Gaul is in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Gaul, why don't?
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Gaul, can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, please give your qualifications, your name, your address, all that good stuff.
My name is Jeffrey. It's G E O F F R E Y, middle initial M, last name's Gaul. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as nine other states and the District of Columbia. I am the president of Princeton Hydro, a water resource and geotechnical engineering firm located in the, headquartered in the city of Trenton, New Jersey. I graduated from Rutgers University in nineteen ninety with a B S and, with a bachelor of civil, in civil engineering. And I also have a master's degree in engineering management from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where I received that in two thousand thirteen. I've been a founding partner of Princeton Hydro since its inception in nineteen ninety seven. Prior to that, when I first got out of school, I worked for a company called Good Kind and No Day, which is now Dewberry, and worked on various geotechnical and highway projects. I then worked at Mellett Tully, you now know them as GZA, Geo-Environmental, as a, a geotechnical engineer, until I ended up at finding Princeton Hydro, or founding Princeton Hydro with two partners in nineteen ninety eight. We've grown to sixty people since then.
Mr. Gaul. Is your license in New Jersey?
Yes, I am licensed, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And your license is in good standing?
It is in good standing.
Then the board accept your credentials. Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Gaul, Mr. Gaul, why don't you tell the board what your assignment was in this case? And, and what did you review in order to undertake that assignment?
Yes, um, so, well, uh, I was requested to review, there was our, our by our client, one of the homeowners in Santori in the neighborhood, to review the application material that is now before the board, specific to stormwater, wetland regulations, environmental impacts.
Mr. Gaul, they're aware of what's happening. Let's just get to it, honestly, like this dive into it.
Okay, all right, very good. Um, thank you, ma'am. And, and Mr. Gaul, let me ask you a question. In terms of your conclusions in this site, let's go over them one by one. Number one, did you have any opinions concerning the fill that may or may not be required at the site? And if you would, would you succinctly share them with the board and give your factual and engineering basis for them?
Sure. Um, I, I reviewed the plans. Of course, I only have a PDF documents that was available, but they are scalable. And I'm able to use my experience in engineering and understanding of plans and, and the technical information associated with it. And I was able to, within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty, determine that this site and, and the engineer for the applicant had stated last time that he needed to quote import to the site to elevate the site in order to make the stormwater management work and to make the seasonal high water table have that two-foot separation that's purported for this project. So I went through the plans, and for example, the, on average, the slab of this two hundred thousand square foot warehouse will be about eight feet above the existing grades of the site right now. And if you look at Victory Road, the, where the grade meets the, the building itself on the ground, it will be about ten feet above Victory Road on average in the middle of the, if you go about halfway down the road. In reviewing the site and looking at that and subtracting out, for example, concrete asphalt that needs to be placed, I came up with about eighty seven thousand cubic yards of fill that's gonna be imported, that required to be imported to the site in order to meet that objective. In addition, about fourteen thousand nine hundred cubic yards of topsoil will be removed. So I wanted just to make the applicant aware of that, because it's gonna be an extra expense, since apparently they're not aware of that volume at this moment. The topsoil, because if you actually look at the plan, it's thirteen, about thirteen point eight acres of disturbance. They're clearing it. The majority of the area is gonna be impervious, except for the detention basin areas. And, and then the detention basin, they're gonna actually have to place sand in there, so they're not putting topsoil back there. So on average, according to the GZA report, there's about an average of nine and a half inches of topsoil throughout the area of disturbance, or actually throughout the site. And so, and they say between five and twelve, or five and fifteen inches of topsoil. So the average is about nine and a half inches. So when you take the thirteen point eight acres and the nine and a half inches of topsoil and reduce the remaining landscape areas to about three point seven five acres, the plans also call for placing, well, it's, there's a disparage, there's, in one detail, it says six inches, and another technical note, it says five inches, so I used five and a half inches of topsoil that will be placed back. So they'll be able to save about that much topsoil, but the equivalent of about three point seven five acres. As a result, you get, there's going to be an excess of fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand cubic yards of topsoil. Now, I, like I said, I don't have access to the AutoCAD drawings, but I was able to scale these off the plans. I would say if I had to admit a level of error, it might be about ten to fifteen percent plus or minus. Regardless, it's a significant amount of material that's gonna have to be brought down the, into the site. So eighty, what does eighty seven thousand cubic yards of soil look like that's gonna be imported? Well, it means that there's, if you have sixteen yards per, cubic yards per triaxle truck, you're dealing with about fifty, just under fifty five hundred triaxle dump trucks on average, that will have to be, have to import the site. So coming in and going out will be fifty four, fifty five, almost fifty five hundred trucks. The same thing for the topsoil. For the topsoil, the fourteen thousand nine hundred cubic yards is equivalent to about nine hundred and thirty triaxle dump trucks. So I'll have to now take that and export it from the site. Another thing, I, I just calculated each of the detention basins, at least the outsides of them where the embankment is, they are required to have an impervious core with a, and the plans specify, I think it's a ten to the minus eight imperviousness to them, which does not exist on site. And I equate, I estimated that to be about eighteen hundred and thirty two cubic yards, which is now another hundred and fifteen triaxle dump trucks. So between the fill coming in
Mr. Gaul, let's not.
Topsoil.
And why should the planning board care? If you're, why does this matter, in your opinion, if it does?
Well, that's, and it's exactly where I was going. So this is not even including the trucks that'll be, the, the concrete trucks, which that'll be required to come in to import the material to build the actual site itself, the asphalt, clean stone, that's gonna have to be subgrade to this concrete and asphalt. So in addition to those trucks, which I have not calculated yet, you're really dealing with a lot of trucks, and it's gonna have a high impact on the, on the, uh, conditions of Victory Road coming into the site. This is not the potential, the, the part of the use of the site as, as allowed by ordinance. It's actually part of the construction. And so with that in mind, you know, you're dealing with about almost sixty five hundred dump trucks that will be coming in and out of the site in or during the construction period. Even GZA in their report of March eighteenth, twenty twenty two, on page seven, states the quote substantial thickness of controlled compacted fill that would be required to reach the desired floor subgrade levels. There is a potential for greater than normal total settlements. That's just the extraneous. They'll be able to engineer around it. They talked about compacting the subgrade and really needing to help modify the site. So they're gonna have to be doing that. So that's a huge impact. One of the concerns that I have, I, I reviewed the ordinance and, and I think it was mentioned earlier, and the township engineer actually mentioned it, or the planning board engineer mentioned it in the report of November fifteenth, twenty twenty two, under subsection one eight eight dash two six. In soil removal and redistribution, it specifically states that no topsoil shall be removed from the township of Howell. I, I'm not gonna go into that more. I believe the planning board and, and the town committee are probably well aware of that ordinance. So anything above six hundred cubic yards is actually gonna require where this material's going, if there's not a site plan already approved for it, what's the, a site plan approval for that? That property that's going to be receiving it. And even if it were to go to one site, it can't necessarily be then sold in piecemeal and exported out of the township. So somehow that fourteen thousand nine hundred cubic yards of topsoil need to remain in the township.
Okay.
According to the ordinance.
Let me go to your next, to the next question. Are you familiar with the drainage area E two that I asked the applicant's engineer about?
Yep, yep. And if you could pull that up? The, the, could you pull up the existing conditions drainage plan?
Yes, Mr. Simon, would you please accommodate that request? Would you be able to do that for me?
You're muted, Mr. Simon.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Um, yeah, um, certainly, we, we will accommodate that for sure. So I'm gonna ask someone on my team to, to pull up. Mr. Gaul, what, what plan do you wanna see?
It's the existing conditions drainage map. It's at the, it's near the end of the stormwater management report.
And we looked at it just before. Yes.
Yes, that's the. So if you'll notice, the dark red, the dark gray line in the bottom left, so as discussed before, there are two main watersheds that have been modeled on this site. If you look on the right side, there's a sort of a dark sinuous line that, it's not as dark as the one on the left, but it runs up and then toward Victory Road in the top of the page, and that is one watershed area. And then on the bottom left with a darker line and a thicker line is another watershed that's been modeled. What was stated by the engineer in the prior planning board hearing is that none of the drainage patterns on this project site are going to be modified. And in fact, when you look at this existing condition on the left, it's about two and a half acres and some off-site drainage, there's a line there that kind of curves. If you look at the, just at the left line on the, inside, inside the inside the drainage area, there's a curved line, and it actually has arrows that point down toward off-site away from Victory Road on the other side of the property. And so water generally flows there and stays there. There's a, the, the blue line that you see in that watershed is actually a, another low area. So this area has a lot of vernal pools. I'm not saying this is one, but it's, there's a lot of undulating topography. And so what happened is, in this model, the water generally goes there. What was testified to was that none of the drainage patterns will change. However, in the proposed condition, that drainage area will be intercepted and then piped through a perforated drainage pipe and over to, as they discussed before, basin four, and any overflow will now go up to Victory Road. So in fact, the, the site's hydrology will actually be significantly changed.
What does that mean? What is that, that the hydrology changes? And, and why should anybody, why should the board care if the hydrology changes?
Well, I mean, the whole point of the, of the stormwater regulations is to, to do your best to ensure that the existing hydrologic patterns prior to development are maintained. For example, right now, any water that goes into the ground, and for example, in the lower left spot, goes eventually infiltrates into the ground when the water table lowers and then spreads out to, on the right side, you'll see those hatched areas. Those are what are called vernal pools that have been mapped with uh, uh, pine land, excuse me, the, um, pine lands tree frog. And that tree frog is a threatened endangered species. And so if you're taking water away from those areas, you're threatening the existence of those ponds, those vernal pools. Not that that's the purview of the, of the planning board, but again, part of the rules and the stormwater rules, which are a concern, is to maintain existing hydrology because, because of those resources that you want to maintain.
Explain, wait, wait, just explain in, in short order what a vernal pool is in case somebody doesn't understand that. Just make it a quick explanation, please.
Sure. A vernal pool is a special habitat area. It's actually also a special, it's a, it's a specific type of wetland. Vernal pools actually only appeared in the early spring, and they dry up by the summer. And why that's important is the water, groundwater level rises up in the winter, right? And it, and then some, some runoff, but mostly groundwater rises up. It fills up these vernal pools, and then frogs and salamanders, some of which are threatened and endangered, like the, the pine lands tree frog, is that it, it, it breeds in there. And why is that so important? And why is that vernal habitat important to those frogs? Because in the summer, when those vernal pools actually dry up and the water level drops down, it eliminates the potential for predatory fish to start to inhabit that area. So for example, that type of frog could not survive in a pond that's lasting all year. Its young would be eaten up as well as the adults by fish. And so those.
Can I just ask a question? Can I just ask a question? Has there been any definitive vernal pond determined by the D E P?
Yes. The gray areas, the hatch areas on the bottom right. See those hatch areas that come up from the bottom of the plan on the bottom right of the property? They're like, they kind of go up from the bottom left to the top right in the hatching pattern. And those are mapped wetlands that have.
I'm not saying map out wetlands. I'm saying, has the D E P issued a absolute affirmative determination that there's a vernal pond there?
One hundred percent. They issued a letter of interpretation, which is why those vernal pools have a one hundred and fifty foot buffer on them as opposed to the ones that are closer to the road that only have a fifty foot buffer. What that means is they're considered exceptional resource value wetlands because they contain those species that are considered threatening.
Well, I mean, you could have a teeny hit or a teeny uh, habitat hit and still get a hundred fifty foot buffer, right?
I, it, there, there's frogs there. There's, there's pine lands.
I'm not asking that. That's not what I asked. I said, i- if there was a teeny potential habitat, the D E P could potentially issue a hundred fifty foot buffer, correct?
Uh, in this case, I believe it was confirmed.
I'm not asking about this case. I'm asking in general. I'm not asking about this case. I'm asking in general, yes or no? If there is an identified potential habitat and the D E P declared it as you know, exceptional resource value with a hundred fifty foot buffer, that would be based upon potential habitat. That's an absolute potential issue. Yes or no?
It's an issue, yes, um.
All right, that's what I'm asking. I'm not, I'm not, oh, I, I'm not getting into the weeds of this. I'm just saying that a hundred fifty foot buffer is something that could potentially habitat, it could potentially happen if it's potential habitat, correct? I'm not saying that's that, I'm not taking away from what's happening here. I'm asking overall in your professional opinion.
Um, I, I, I guess in general, but in this case it hasn't been, it, it was specific.
Okay, so you're not willing to answer the question? Like, uh, I'm just saying, as a professional environmental expert, if there are potential landscape project hits for T and E and there could be a potential hundred fifty foot buffer issued, that could happen on a site, correct?
I can, what, what, I'm not sure what you're.
Oh, my God. Okay, so forgot. Like, you know what? I'm over it. I, I, I'm done asking questions. The, the, I can tell you from my professional experience and my professional experience in dealing with the E P, if there's a threatening endangered species, potential habitat, they would look to do a hundred fifty foot buffer. That was my question. I'm not sure why their reluctance to answer the question is happening, but that is my professional experience. So that does happen, yes.
I can tell you D P hundred and fifty foot buffer because there's, there's there, it's, it's habitat and also confirmed.
Potential habitat. Let, let, let's be clear. It, they will get, issue a hundred fifty foot buffer if there's potential habitat, yes or no? And I, I, you know, I have experience too, so, yes or no?
Okay, I get it.
So I, I mean, like, I don't understand why we're dodging the question. I, I'm just I'm over it. Honestly, I'm over it.
Mr. Gaul, in wetlands terminology, there's three different types of wetlands, yes?
Correct.
I'm talking about freshwater wetlands, not coastal. There's wetlands of ordinary resource value, exceptional resource value and intermediate.
Exceptional, exceptional resource value, yes.
And, yes, and, and the wetlands of exceptional resource value, what is one of the ways that they get that designation, please?
Uh, there's documented, um, habitat for um, threatened endangered species or high water quality, C one waters, that kinda thing. But in this case, it's because of identification of, of, uh, threatened endangered species.
I guess, Mr. Lieberman, that's what my question is, because I've had the experience where it's potential habitat and there's been exceptional resource value imposed. So that was my question multiple times, and your environmental expert was unwilling to answer the question.
Well, I, I, I think, you know, as an engineer, he has to be very careful. He has license.
No, I understand that, but my point is, is that as an environmental professional, and that's how you qualified him, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
And I have had multiple years of experience with the D P in areas where there are potential habitat for exceptional, like the potential, the exceptional resource value can come up when there's potential habitat. And I asked that question, I don't know, five times now, and he refused to like address it. That makes me.
No, 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 Jeff, we're not, Jeff, that's not what we do. Just listen to the question, please. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, like, I've asked you the question multiple times and he dodged it and that's fine. I mean, it is what it is. No, no, not for nothing. I asked it very clearly multiple times.
Let, let me ask.
He would not answer it. He would not answer it. He would not answer it. So what I'm saying to the board is, Mr. Chairman, you're gonna have to take that for what it is, and that's the way I'm gonna leave it, and I'm not engaging in any further.
All right, understood. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody on that. Um, so why don't you please, now, you, you've gone over the vernal habitat issue. Would you explain to me, you know, and, and let's, let's, let's finish this discussion. What your issue is concerning, uh, the pipe that runs from that area and, and what your concerns are, if you have concerns. Let's, let's bring it to a conclusion if you, if you'd be so kind.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. Would you please, um, finish your testimony as to this slide and share with the board what your concerns are about the stormwater plan as depicted on the slide? And, you know, do, do so in, in prompt order, but make sure that you cover everything you need to, please.
Sure, there, there's several, well, first of all, the areas in blue that are, um, uh, identified there are what the engineer had modeled as ponded areas. And so in other words, you know, when there's ponded areas and closed depressions, um, in, in correct, and rightly so, they would, um, look at the, um, uh, they would use those ponded areas to slow the water down. So it, it, it is more conservative. It actually helps, um, uh, reduce the peak flows from the existing conditions. Um, however, uh, when you look at this plan and it's, um, you can zoom into the bottom of the plan where it says drainage area E two onsite.
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you. So there's two test pits. There's called A soil right there, it's, well, meaning A soils, meaning the, um, the designation of the hydrologic soil group. There's a, 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 um, uh, an elevation contour that is basically a closed contour. In other words, it, it, uh, it's just, it's not circular, but it's, it's like an oval sort of amoeba shape there. There's two test pits inside of it. Uh, just up, uh, just above the, the word onsite in parentheses. Um, and that area is a closed depression, which I don't believe in, in reviewing the model that that was included. Additionally, if you go up to the top right, uh, um, it says block forty-one lot seventeen, there's another similar uh, closed depression there that does not appear to have been modeled, um, as a closed depression in the site. Um, on the top left, you'll see there's, uh, and that's one of the, well, the, the ones in hatch are the ones that are being proposed to fill. Those are found to be ordinary and not habitat for threatened endangered species. And so they're actually being filled under the general permit number six, um, um, as well. But, uh, there are a few missing in, uh, uh, areas that probably need to be modeled. Um, and which would probably pull down the, uh, pre-existing peak flow, um, uh, um, peak flows, which would, uh, require further pulling down of the post-development peak flows. One of the other things, and if we could go to the, the next slide of, or the, it's the proposed condition of the drainage plan. So if we zoom in to where, uh, Mr. Lieberman uh, was having this discussion earlier, there's a perforated pipe on the southern boundary of the property. It's a perforated pipe, um, and a stone, and it's surrounded by stone. I'll tell you as an engineer, you perforate a pipe and put stone in it because you're trying to, uh, you can try to both capture and also recharge, uh, groundwater um, in order to, uh, either recharge it down to the groundwater elevation or, uh, capture it. In this case.
Mr. Gaul, where is that pipe on this joint? Just show everybody exactly where that pipe is, so everybody knows.
It's literally, yes, thank you. It's literally across, it's right next to the prop, to the, the southern property boundary um, between the two manholes that you had identified, uh, previously. Um, the engineer had defined those, that is a quote French drain. It does meet the definition of a stormwater infiltration basin.
No, no, stop. Why do you say that that drain is a stormwater device or a stormwater feature? Why do you say that?
Because it meets the definition of a subs, an underground, um, uh, infiltration basin, just like the other basins that you see on, on the, uh, just next to the building with the multiple pipes and up on the top left. Um, in this case, it has a single perforated pipe, um, that is surrounded by stone. It's meant for water to be able to easily be transmitted through, uh, both down and out, um, of the pipe. And so what my, my opinion is, my professional opinion is, that was placed because there was a concern from the bottom left by filling and providing that seven feet of fill that's required in the lower left-hand corner that it would create a bigger ponding area, which could lead to a hydrologic trespass concern, uh, by the adjacent property owner. As a result, now instead of the water ending up there and infiltrating into the ground or going south, it's going into this pipe. And the reason I'm saying it's not gonna infiltrate is because, according to the test pits that are provided for um, underground basin number five, which is on the road and between the building and the slope. It's shown on this.
Yes. What test pit numbers are you talking about?
Uh, it is test pit numbers, um, there with me. Test pit numbers twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
So what information did you find in test pit numbers twenty-seven and twenty-eight that you found to be germane and why?
Uh, test pit, um, number twenty-seven and twenty-eight, um, have seasonal high groundwater. Um, that is, let me see here. Uh, the seasonal high groundwater is at, uh, an elevation above, um, the infiltration pipe that goes along the property boundary. In other words.
How do you know that?
Uh, because invert of that, in the invert of that pipe, I'm just gonna pull it out here. The invert of that pipe on the plan states that the, uh, invert of the pipe is at elevation seventy-three point one four. Whereas in the elevation of seasonal high groundwater is at, on, um, test pit twenty-eight is, and I'll just let me quickly calculate that is eighty-five point eight minus uh, minus forty-nine divided by twelve. Is at where was it? Excuse me for a second. Oh, I'm sorry, I had the wrong one here. Sorry. So the elevation of seasonal high groundwater at test pit twenty-eight, which is, uh, is, is, is at seventy-five point zero five. Whereas the invert of the pipe, the perforated pipe on the property boundary is elevation seventy-three point one four. And so it's, uh, uh, excuse me, or there it is, seventy, that, I'm, I stand corrected, it's seventy-four point nine. Thank you. And the pipe invert is at seventy-three point one four. What that means is that pipe is now intercepting seasonal high. So during parts of times of the year, especially in the winter, when the groundwater elevates, that perforated pipe at the toe of slope is now gonna intercept groundwater. Now, number one, it's not meeting, it's, it's actually not at all meeting the two-foot separation between seasonal high and the bottom of the, of the infiltration surface. It's now taking that water and directing it where it normally would have infiltrated and ran to the south. It's now going to the basin four, up through Victory Road and offsite. What that means is during the winter months, when the water elevation gets higher, the groundwater, you're gonna have a constant flow, not just from stormwater runoff. You're gonna have a constant flow of water into, um, into, uh, basin, I think it's basin number four, which was referenced before.
Two questions on that then. Um, if, if the two feet of separation isn't required, what if anything does that mean in terms of whether this meets the N J D E P stormwater requirements? And the Howell Township Stormwater Ordinance? Do you have an opinion at all?
Yeah, regardless of what, you know, what's been stated is whether it's not, it's been quote designed as a stormwater basin, you know, um, you know, you can call it what you want. It's a stone-filled, it's a, it's a perforated pipe surrounded by stone and filter fabric, which is exactly what is the definition of a infiltration, uh, an underground infiltration, or actually, excuse me, infiltration system is. If you look at the, um, uh, the New Jersey B M P manual, um, it's exactly that definition, both for small scale and large scale infiltration systems. As a result, and the reason they do the two feet is for two reasons. Concerns about impact to water quality and functioning of the system. In the winter, that pipe will be flooded. So whatever purpose it had, whatever it may have been, is not gonna function anymore. And it's simply gonna take what normally in a current condition had ended up on the southwestern side and be discharged to basin nine and then sent up through, um, Victory Road. Going back with, uh, being is now you're intercepting the groundwater in the winter that would normally be potentially replenishing those vernal pool habitats that are south of the site.
So is that consistent or inconsistent with the D P regulations?
Uh, you mean the, the fact that it's not compliant?
Yes.
Well, it's inconsistent with compliance, so it's a, it's, it's a, it's a system that is defined as a re, as a infiltration basin. And it's out of compliance.
It's out of compliance, yes. Um, okay, good. What else? So, so we've dealt with that pipe. Is, are there any other concerns that you have concerning, for example, the inlet of that the water will ultimately go to on Victory Road and their capacity?
Well, going back to the, you, you were, you were discussing that, um, the pipe, uh, between the two manholes. It was just, it's actually shown on this plan here between the two manholes where seasonal high groundwater um, is higher than, uh, we, is been determined to be higher and admitted by the, the, uh, applicant's engineer. Where seasonal high water is.
You identify that pipe by location, so for the record, we know what you're talking about. What, what exactly are you talking about for the record?
It's the it's the fifteen-inch diameter H D P E pipe between manhole number ten, proposed manhole number ten and proposed manhole number nine.
Go ahead, finish your testimony, please. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, and so what that means is, so whenever you put stormwater pipe in, stormwater pipes um, are made for convenience. They're also, but they're also not watertight. Um, unless you decide to put in watertightness on the pipes and, and, um, um, that, that's not a normal construction practice, water will infiltrate into the pipe if it's below the groundwater level. What that will also do is artificially lower the groundwater table. In addition, stormwater pipe, uh, the bed of stormwater pipe is normally a granular material, whether it's a a sandier material that might be there or a gravel that they may install, and I believe in the, you'll have to look at the details. I believe it has a gravel bed. Um, it will actually, that's a place where, you know, they call, they talk about, uh, how water, it, it goes to the, you know, the least resistance, and so if you have all these voids under the pipe, that's where the groundwater's gonna go. What that means is it's now gonna discharge to the recharge, the infiltration basins, the surface ones on the right and add more water than has been designed for it to handle. That could actually over the, artificially elevate groundwater in that location.
Does, is there a best management practice that's been adopted by D P which would indicate the, the, uh, whether or not this design meets D P standards?
Frankly, it's an omission in the regulations. Um, if, there's not a specific standard for it. But if you think about the, and I've actually had this conversation with the E P officials, um, about this concern. Um, and the issue is, you're basically trying to recharge in the recharge basins, and as the water discharges, it's now getting discharged again, and so you're basically negating the benefit of the recharge basins. And you're creating a, um, a basically a, uh, uh, um, what are they, you know, if you're really talking about credits and debits, you're creating a debit on the groundwater that you're supposed to be infiltrating on the site. Um, so, but.
Go ahead. Do you have an understanding as to whether best engineering practices are consistent with this particular proposal?
I, I, again, you're gonna find that there's continuous, uh, groundwater during the periods, probably from at least December to April during the year where there's gonna be water pouring out of that, that pipe and into basin four um, and creating, uh, additional soil load, or water, uh, hydraulic loading on the infiltration system.
So what does that relate to in terms of best engineering practices, if you have an opinion on that issue?
Well, it's the, the whole, the whole purpose of these infiltration, or the whole functioning of these infiltration basins, meaning they empty in seventy-two hours in lower back. and lower back to the normal groundwater surface elevation, so that when the next storm comes in, it can handle the recharge once again and then meet the attenuation requirements. If you have a constant amount of source water, um, then it's gonna artificially elevate the groundwater elevations in the basin and not meet the recharge requirements.
Thank you, sir. Before we leave this drawing, is there any other testimony that you wish to provide from, from your engineering perspective?
Excuse me one second, Mister Lieberman.
Yes, sir.
So we stop at ten o'clock. So obviously you can bring this witness back, you know, um.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Eileen, I guess we gotta give them a, uh, yeah, we gotta give these guys a date.
We have a meeting on May eleventh, we have a meeting on May eighteenth, and then we go live on June first. And I don't know if you wanna bring him back next week.
What's it look like next week?
Next week is Momma Commerce.
What date is that next week, please? May eleventh?
I, I'm not available on May eleventh.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, thank you. I didn't, so thank you.
What's May eighteenth look like?
May eighteenth has, I believe, a submission waiver and ninety-sixth industrial court on it.
That's the state bar annual meeting in Atlantic City.
Yeah, I, I, I have a, a federal court remand hearing.
Okay, so what's June first look like?
Ju- June first looks good for me.
All right.
June first, okay.
That's gonna have, that's gonna have to be with notice because it's a live meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
Oh, um, my, may I ask my experts, uh, both experts, could you please indicate if you're available? I, I, I just have to make sure they're available. Mister Klein, are you available? Jeff is available. Mister Klein, are you available?
June first, no.
You're not available June first?
I have to be in Old Bridge, as far as I know. I have to double check to make sure it's still on, but as far as I know, it's still on, so I have to.
So what's the, what's the first meeting in, uh, July?
Well, I have June fifteenth.
I'm just saying, it's the applicant's choice. They don't have to acquiesce to the objectors availability.
Okay, all right, um. So Mister Simon, June first?
Um, yes, I, I don't, uh, in terms of uh, rebuttal testimony, I would have to, you know, check to the extent that we desire to have it. I'd have to check with my uh, many witnesses as to, uh, their availability, but certainly, um, we could complete, uh, you know, Mister Lieberman's, uh, at least direct case.
But, but if you don't have anything else, could we pick another date? Because that's not gonna take the whole meeting. I have one other, well, I have to finish him. That's gonna take a little while. Mister Goll, and then I've got a traffic guy.
I mean, that's up to, that's up to Mister Simon.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, we, we, we could do is, um, we could carry it, without further notice to May eleventh, understanding that that would be just a placeholder, and that would give me an opportunity to check with all of my witnesses in, in terms of, uh, a, availability for a future meeting and work with the board, uh, um, with Eileen and, and try to find a date uh, between now and, and May eleventh.
This, Mister Simon, would you consult with me too, so we could try to have that, a time that's good for everybody?
I, I, I certainly would, uh, consult with you, um, but we would certainly ask, even though I would need to check with my witnesses between now and May eleventh, I would ask if tonight we can reserve the June first date. Uh, because it's, it's likely that that's when we would like to carry it to, but I just wanna confirm with my witnesses.
Okay.
Well, I, I do respect your request another date if my planner's not there. I know that it is true that the applicant controls the clock, but I'm just asking for courtesy.
Mister Lieberman, you said, you said a planner, so I, I know Mister, Mister Goll hasn't finished his testimony and Mister Klein is waving his hand. Um, other than those two, you don't have any other witnesses, correct?
Yeah, I, I meant traffic planner, and yet that is correct, yes, yeah.
So if we can ask again that to reserve the, the June first date, understanding that if we end up with the June first date, we'd have to renotice, but for now, we ask that the matter be carried um, by the board to the May eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-three a meeting of the board without further notice in between now and then, uh, we'll, we'll try to confirm a, a future date.
Okay.
You wanna grant an extension of time past the June first date now?
Oh, no, Eileen, I think it's fine. I think I'd like to, um, uh, provide an extension of time to the board, uh, through June thirtieth.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so let me understand, you're carrying it to May eleventh, to, one week from tonight, to select a new date in the future?
Yeah, so that the board can, can I, uh, select a new date in the future? I have to consult with my witnesses, but I'm asking now, since we're all together, um, if the June first date is, can be reserved, because at this time, subject to checking availability, uh, that would be a preferred date for the applicant.
The objector, one of the objectors witnesses is not available, we know that, Ray.
I, I'll be, Mister Rizzuto, I'll be talking to Mister Lieberman.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mister Rizzuto, do you wanna carry it on the record, May eleven?
Sure. What do you want? I'm sorry, I have no problem with that.
Rather than showing up, though, can this be done administratively before then and, and just worked out? And then perhaps counsel for the board can make the announcement at that meeting, is that possible?
All right, hold on. Eileen, you, you have a meeting and a schedule for May eleventh, correct? It's a regular meeting, it's a regular meeting. Okay, so then, so then, uh, for all the members of the public who are present and all of our board members and, uh, our professionals, this matter is being carried till next Thursday, May eleventh at seven P, starting at seven PM, and wherever we fall, this matter falls on the agenda. At that time, there will not be a hearing, but there will be a determination of the future date, which will be announced on May eleventh. The May eleventh meeting is to announce the next date. And there will be no further notice from that date forward.
That, with, with, with the understanding, Mister Rizzuto, that if we have to, um, if the meeting date is in, in June, uh, when you go live, we respectfully understand that we'd have to renotice.
Yeah, right, because, because it's a change in format, okay.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Are we adjourned now?
I just wanna thank the, I just wanna thank the board for, uh, their attention and courtesies this evening, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no reason to go into executive.
Any master plan?
Uh, some things are gonna be changed up, um, well, well, we'll discuss that, uh, I guess at the next meeting.
I mean, the quick, the quick answer, Paul, is that, like, the farmland preservation element is gonna be for us, like, you know, soon. We're still working with the state and the county to get that finalized, but that's gonna be coming before us soon, and we're looking at amending the circulation element and also amending perhaps the land use element, but those are far off in the future, so, like, the farmland preservation is probably immediate, right, Paul? Like, I mean, that's what you would say.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're waiting on.
Exactly.
Then that's not up to us, that's right, county and state. So, all right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
All in favor? All right, guys, I'll see yous next week.
Good night.